All right. I have six thirty on my watch. I would like to call the Village of Cottage Grove, Village of Board of Trustees, meeting to order on Monday, May seventeenth, at six thirty again on my watch. We are holding this as a Zoom meeting due to the pandemic, although maybe soon be back in person, which is exciting. The link to the Zoom is at the top of the agenda. There's also an audio-only call-in number with a meeting ID along with that too as well. Do a roll call. Lisa, please.
Alan.
Present.
Murphy. Present. Peterson.
Here.
Blackwell. Here. Valencia. Present. Vandermaelby. Ann Williams.
Present. Paul has another commitment tonight. Oh, we're commitment. All right, we have a quorum. The agenda was properly posted. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So find a flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. So if you would like to speak, find the unmute button, state your name and your address, and please hold your comments to no more than three minutes. So with that, I will pause and allow anybody from the public to jump right in. All right, with that then, we'll move on to item five, discussing considering meeting minutes from our village board meeting from May third. Any edits? Or updates or a motion to approve?
To make a motion to approve the minutes, Ezra.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Troy. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Moving on then to unfinished business. First on that is, item A is discussing, consider agreement with Dean County for the reconstruction of County BB and from Damascus Trail to Bus Road. Add in our packet. Go ahead.
There's a brief memo in your packet and a copy of the draft agreement, essentially just for between Dane County and the village, for Dane County to pick up their portion of the project. They reviewed Kevin's numbers and the splits and everything. And they've also agreed that if we do run into something unforeseen, that we could address any extra costs after the fact. So and our village attorneys have reviewed the draft language and approved.
All right, any questions for JJ or Larry on this?
JJ, I'm just curious, is the amount that they're covering what we were expecting?
Yep, and actually rounded up just a bit to, um, there do not, or not to exceed, just a little bit of a buffer there.
Any other questions? All right, this is the discuss and consider if there are more, no more discussion, or no more discussion items. Anybody want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Troy.
Oh, go ahead.
I'd make a motion to approve the agreement with Dane County for the reconstruction of County Highway BB from Damascus Trail to Bus Road.
Second. Thanks, Heidi.
All right, thanks, Heidi. Thanks, Troy. Don't fight over the motions tonight. There would probably be plenty of them. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Item B is discuss and consider a developer agreement with Avid Real Estate Holdings LLC to undertake the development of College Town Bio Dome property, which is on the corner of, uh, now I'd have to, Commerce Parkway and Landmark, I believe, across from Culvers. And again, there's memo and everything in here. Again, Larry, any comments here? Or Matt?
I believe Larry will give a summary. There's cover memos as well in the, in the packet.
Sorry, it always took me a little longer to be able to connect tonight than I know which, uh, which agreement are we starting with here, John?
Uh, the Avid. Real Estate Holdings.
Okay. Uh, we're trying to be pretty brief on all of these. Avid deal, it's fairly, uh, fairly similar to the ones we've approved before, you've approved before, and the one other, most of them would be approving tonight. Um, we do recommend approval. Uh, they're going to be building a thirty thousand plus square foot building, and their financial incentives include almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollar purchase price credit, a cash grant of fifty-five thousand, and up to three hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and forty dollars of increment that they'll generate with the property. The assessed value guarantee is three thousand, sorry, three million dollars. And there's very few public improvements or anything that go along with this project. And there's not much else to say. It's, uh, it looks like it's becoming a reality, and it looks like it's, uh, we're able to achieve an agreement that meets all the terms that the board directed us to pursue.
All right, any questions or comments? Otherwise, there's a motion.
I'll make a motion to, um, what do I want to say here? To approve the agreement with Avid Real Estate Holdings LLC to undertake the development at College Town Bio Dome property.
Is there a second?
There is.
Second from David, thank you. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Uh, moving on then to discuss and consider the development agreement, agreement with J E K C R E LLC to undertake the development of J E K property. See, this one is on Highway N, if I remember correctly. But Matt, correct me up. Matt's nodding, okay. Uh, Larry, similar scenario here, I think, right?
Right, similar here. This is a little bit different because, uh, the, the closing for this property is, is put off for a few months, pending, the, the developer, they're putting together a tenant, uh, some tenant pre-lease agreements. Uh, they've got a fairly long, uh, period before the closing will occur in this case. But the, uh, the project is, is to build a fifteen thousand square foot facility with, um, uh, one or two drive-throughs on either end, and possibly they're not talk of show a different designer, there might be a separated coffee kiosk or something like that, but that's still to be determined. Financial incentives are, um, a purchase price credit of three hundred thousand dollars and up to three hundred thousand dollars in increment on a pay-go basis for a four million dollar assessed value guarantee. Uh, and again, this one, you know, this one, we don't expect anybody to be breaking ground on this one anytime soon. Uh, this basically sets up the parameter for them to use to try to put together a viable project and call sometime in summer or late summer. Uh, moving forward, we recommend approval of this agreement.
Um, Larry, just one addition there. There's, there's also a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar, um, upfront cash grants at, at either, um, grant occupancy permit or a build out of their first tenant in that facility.
Right, and that was shared with you as a revision to the, to the memo you received last week.
All right, any questions on this one?
Uh, I do have one question. If the closing doesn't happen by a certain date, then we can still give incentive for the land because that's land that we own. Is that correct?
In other words, if this deal doesn't go through, yes, we could still, the village could still give a, provide an incentive and land price to another developer.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
All right, any other questions?
I guess I, I'm curious, sorry, John, just, I'm curious about the last point in the memo, where the developer still needs to obtain site plan approval for this project. I guess, how does that, how does that, if at all, factor into the closing? Or are they, they're not mutually exclusive?
Um, David, they, they won't close on the property until they have, um, we wouldn't want them to close on the property until they have a site plan. So that, that, that'll be, their, their closing will happen down the road here a bit, so there shouldn't be any
problems with that. So they're still working on the details of the site. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the order of operations here in my head.
This is, this is all really being, um, towards for, what we're doing tonight is more so getting the financial incentives in place ahead of the, the deadline that's this Wednesday.
Makes sense. Okay.
Yep.
No, I'm good. Thanks, John.
All right, any other questions on this one or discussion? Otherwise, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the development agreement with J E K C R E LLC um, to undertake development of the J E K property.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, thanks, Melissa. Thanks, David. Um, any further discussions? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Um, hi. Hi.
Anybody opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to yet another one. Um, this one is discuss and consider development agreement with Patent Real Estate LLC uh, to undertake development of patent property. This, I think, is the, uh, dance to deal with some other space available for, for lease, and it's on Limerick Drive, I think, behind, uh, future Dolphin Swim Academy. Larry, Matt, anyone, anything on this one?
Yeah, you're, you're right, John. And this is a ten thousand square foot multi-tenant facility. But we built a financial incentives here, incentives here, um, a purchase price credit of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, and all of the property tax increment created by this project for remainder of the life of the TID. Uh, the assessed value guarantee is for one point seven five million, uh, for the property value after construction. Uh, like the last project, the site plan approval is still pending, um, and would be automatically incorporated into the grid when approved, and there's no public improvement. So in that sense, it was a little simpler, um, than through a lot of other agreements, and we recommend approval.
All right, thanks, Larry. Uh, any questions or comments on this one from board members? If not, then is there a motion consideration?
I'll make a motion to approve the development agreement with Patent Real Estate LLC to undertake the development of patent property.
Second.
All right, thanks, Heidi. Thanks, Troy. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Um, again, this, uh, discuss and consider development agreement with R G H Cottage Grove LLC to undertake the development of Grand Appliance Property. This is tucked right behind, um, Landmark, uh, their, their corporate headquarters. So, uh, forty thousand square foot, um, distribution center. So Larry, on this one?
All right, all right, give me one second there.
Keep me on the toes.
Because, yeah, you're keeping me on my toes because of that, too many documents open here. So this is otherwise referred to as demand appliance development. And I think we've got a correction to make in our, uh, our cover memo for this one too. This should be a forty thousand square foot facility, not a fifteen thousand square foot facility. And the financial incentives are a purchase price credit of a hundred and sixty-six thousand, which represents about half of the, the, the sale price. Um, and then up to three hundred thousand dollars on a pay-go basis from taxes can be created on the project. The assessed value guarantee is for, uh, two point eight million dollars. And a precise implementation plan for the project is still pending, uh, pending approval. Um, and the, uh, we did a little something different with the, the personal guarantee that we usually get here. We had a parent guarantee from Grand Appliance Company Incorporated instead of a personal guarantee. And, um, that's about all I would report on this one. Uh, and we recommend approval.
Um, obviously, I, I, I believe the site for, for this one, Larry, is, um, it's all approved, so we're, we're good there. And then just so the board's aware, the, um, the typo in the memo that Larry was referring to, that the language is accurate in the agreement itself. So that, that was just a, um, issue with the cover letter.
So just to be. An issue in, in attempting to write five cover letters in a short period of time on a Friday.
Right.
So it's, it, not only is it, it's a forty thousand, but the memo says retail and professional services. This is just a warehouse. I'm looking through the agreement. I think it's, this is just base, correct?
Warehouse, distribution, light industrial building, correct?
Okay.
With some office.
Okay.
Correct. That, that description was, that, that wasn't correct.
They copy paste get you every time. I get it.
All right, any other discussion on this one? Otherwise, is there a motion for consideration?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the developer agreement with R G H Cottage Grove LLC to undertake the development of Grand Appliance Property.
I'll second.
All right, thanks, Troy. Thanks, Sarah. Any further discussion on this one? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. All right, moving down the line here. Um, next one is, uh, discuss and consider a development agreement with M C Swanson Properties LLC to undertake a development of Atlantis Valley Food Property, which is right next to Skill. Um, and this, uh, this particular business is expanding, uh, out of their existing facility in the park into a new one uh, with this, this particular thing. Um, Matt or Larry, updates on this?
So the, the, uh, this one, it will need a little bit more than the standard motion here. There's a particular provision of the development agreement that we thought we needed to kick back to the board um, to, to, uh, determine what, what direction you'd like to go. So first, this, this, this development agreement is quite different than most of the others that we approve. Um, we thought that for a number of reasons, each of these changes was appropriate, at least for our recommendation, recommendation to you that you approve, based on the fact that we've got a, an established business, um, looking to expand. As you said, John, a business that's already in the park, uh, you know, an employer who's already existing in the village. We, we removed, uh, from this agreement any requirement that the property be built. Uh, there's still some, I guess, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty that's, at this time, with respect to building materials and other things. And, and this particular developer, or business owner, I guess, more than developer in this case, uh, really wanted to have the flexibility to decide to pull the plug on this and not be locked in to require, in required to build this building. Um, so we removed that requirement. There's no assessment guarantee. Um, although the, the expectation of this business owner is that the property will, uh, will generate uh, uh, an assessed value of, after the project is built, for at least four million dollars. Um, there's no personal guarantee, no letter of credit for public improvements. There's only a sidewalk here. Um, it, we've removed insurance requirements, um, and a number of other things. Uh, so it, the way that this agreement works is a little bit different in that, basically, the, the M C Swanson would not receive any increment unless they hit a four million dollar assessment. And only for the years where they hit a four million dollar assessment will they receive increment payments the following year. Um, but if they do that, they get the increment that was generated back to the commencement of construction. So it's more of a, uh, incentive-based, uh, development agreement, I guess, in the sense that, you know, that if they never build, or if they don't build something that reaches a four million dollar threshold, they don't get, they don't get anything. And they only have a few years to do it until the expenditure period ends. So, um, that's the way this is built. There's one provision that, where we would look for your input. You have, and I think every development agreement that includes test funding, since at least we've been representing the village, we've included a tax agreement, and we, and we, we ask that those tax agreements be, be perpetual, that they run with the land into the future. Basically, what they do is, they, uh, they, they require the owner to not seek property tax exemptions and to, you know, to covenants that the property will remain taxable. Um, and then, uh, if, if for some reason the property becomes, becomes a tax exempt in whole or in part, then it requires what we call municipal services payment for that loss of tax revenue. It's really a, a way to, to try to keep those properties on the tax rolls since they're, um, especially in this case, they're in the business park. And, and this, this, M C Swanson really has, you know, to be clear, has no intention of, of, you know, trying to push this property into a, a tax exempt status. That's not, that's not what, what the issue here. But the owner, uh, Mr. Swanson, just feels pretty strongly that, uh, you do it, having to stick with the property in perpetuity is, is too long. And what they've offered instead is to engage in a tax agreement that would remain in place until ten years after, or thereabouts, after the end of the TID, uh, the TID closure date, which would be, we just wrote into the agreement that it would be January first of twenty twenty-eight. So that's what they've offered. Um, since it was, that, that provision was, and since we'd already removed, uh, you know, much of the, of the, the main provisions that we have and a lot of these other developer agreements, we just thought this one was one we needed to push back to you for review. But everything else is in agreement. We're in agreement with them on everything else. Uh, it's a good agreement. It's very different than the others in that it's just entirely incentive-based. Um, and, uh, we're just looking for some direction on what you want to do with this tax agreement and what the term of that should be. Um, so if someone wants to make a motion at some point in this discussion, uh, we'd ask that you, you know, that you, you move to, uh, to, to approve with whatever you, it is a grid specified with inappropriate term for this, uh, tax agreement.
All right, uh, thanks, Larry. Any questions or comments for this one? I would think there probably will be.
I guess I want to make sure that I heard all that right or correctly. Um, so the agreement, um, the applicant would like the, the, the taxes to go, uh, can you just re-explain about that, what goes until January of twenty-eighth? And then, um, yeah.
And, you know, to be clear, you know, I, I, I think that where Mr. Swanson and their team started this process, you know, they really would like to not have the tax agreement in place. And, um, you know, they, they, they pushed pretty hard with her to be known. And so the position they're in now, offering, uh, ten years beyond the, uh, the TID termination date is pretty significant change on their part from where they started, uh, you know, in an attempt to move in our direction. So I'd acknowledge that. But, but specifically, Melissa, what, what we're talking about here is one of the pieces that we include in these developer agreements is, is basically a promise by the landowner to, 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 to take actions consistent with keeping this property taxable. And, and after, it, it, you know, the, the offer here is for, for basically the January first twenty twenty-eight date, I'm, I'm sorry, twenty thirty-eight, uh, date, twenty thirty-eight, I, I misspoke. Fifteen, basically about fifteen years, um, given the, the, the time left in the TID and ten years beyond that. Um, the, the, what we have in a, in a typical agreement is that, that this promise to, to, to do everything in one's power to keep the property taxable or to pay municipal services, we, we ask that people apply that in perpetuity. And what the developer here is asking for is that that be a fifteen-year promise instead of forever. And, uh, and basically what that means is after those fifteen years or so expire, um, there would be no limit on what this property could be used for or sold for, uh, it could be sold, for instance, to a, to a tax exempt entity, um, and, and go off the tax rolls.
Okay, um, uh, and currently, if how most of the agreements work, um, uh, like if they say, if, uh, uh, owner sells the property in a TID, the new owner doesn't get the benefit of the agreement or the tax incentive. Right?
Usually, the way we set up almost all of these agreements is that if there's a transfer of the property to a successor, that successor does, um, step into the shoes of the developer and, and is able to receive those, those incentive payments to the extent there's any that are remaining.
Left. Um, okay. Okay, that was helpful. Thank you.
And, and Melissa, they would also assume all the other responsibilities in the agreement too. So where if there's incentives remaining, they would be able to, uh, receive those, but they would also, they would also be taking on the other aspects or guarantees and obligations in the, in the agreement too.
So, so how long will the owner get benefit based on this agreement from a tax perspective?
Well, the owner is going to get all of what we calculate, assuming they can build a four million dollar, uh, building, um, which they have every intention of doing, and, and it's very likely that the building will actually be assessed at a higher dollar amount than that. That's a conservative estimate, as I understand it. They'll be, they'll really be refunded, the value of those, the tax, the, the taxes on the portion of the property that are, represent the increase in tax or the increment created by that project through the end of the, 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 this TID, which is coming right up here in, you know, five or six years. So we, we will, uh, I, So we, we will, uh, uh, I, I, how long they'll receive the benefit, Troy? Um, they'll be, they'll, they'll have saved, uh, a, you know, a significant amount of money, uh, if you will, have been recoup, have recouped what they spent on taxes for that period of time. But those, those payments will end here later this decade.
So, so.
Sorry, Troy. If they move forward, if they move forward right away, um, it, it'll end up being about five years of, likely five years of payments. If, if, uh, if the project gets delayed, that could change.
So, so basically he'll get the benefits through 2028 and then, uh, there's 10 years after that that he cannot sell it to, uh, and turn that into a non-taxable prod, property, or give it to a church as an example.
Uh, 2027, other, other, other than that, I think what you said is correct.
Yeah. And, and there really isn't anything that prohibits someone from selling it to a church. It's ju, church. It's just that municipal services have to be paid, um, under their, off, under their proposal here, Troy. It would be until 2038. So, um, uh, again, it's not that they can't sell the property. It's, it's, there will be municipal services uh, uh, payments or tax payments made under their proposal for about, about 16 years. And quite frankly, it's very, very likely that that will continue far beyond that, but it's just not required after that point.
I guess, I'm, I, I'm, I'm super close, Larry, to getting this in my head. I, I think, I, I get the TID pay, I get the incremental payments. I guess I'm still stuck on the municipal services. And it, and I'm really trying to, to work the mental gymnastics here, but I'm re, I, I guess I'm just, why am I struggling on this? And I, I'm trying to figure it out, but I just, I, I don't. Caught here.
There's a, yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of different pieces here in these development agreements. And, 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 you know, quite frankly, as I, when I started working on these, I, I had the same problem. You get the, the, uh, assessment guarantee confused with the tax agreement, confused with the personal guarantee. And it's, and it's easy to do. This is really a very separate piece. Doesn't relate to anything else that we really talk about in these developer agreements. It's, it's something that we put on the table, um, as something that the village would, you know, we always hope it won't be a cost to develop or anything because it's such a small percentage of the property purchase marketplace that, uh, that, that would be, that are, uh, property tax exempt. But that could change in the future. Um, in Wisconsin, it's, it's, we're pretty limited in, in who can be tax exempt by the constitution, property tax exempt. But it's just one of these things that we put in that attempts to keep a commerce park in commerce, right? Um, that it's not, that, that the, the uses of the property are not going to be one of those very limited uses that, uh, can claim the property tax exemption. Um, and, and so you, you can really think about a tax agreement in isolation. Um, it's, it's really a, a, a mechanism to try to keep taxes coming to the village. And if someone does become tax exempt to make municipal payments instead of taxes, they're all in the same agreement. It's a, a very discreet, separate piece. So what we've, what we've written is, well, if for some reason this property becomes tax exempt, you pay taxes as if it wasn't. And it's not taxes, then it's municipal services charges. So, uh, that's what we, that's what we attempt to do. And it creates a disincentive for someone to move it into, um, you know, a non-taxable. The, the purpose of using the public money here is to create tax base.
So.
Among other things, but that's the primary.
Sure. And I, and I found the, I found the portion here in the agreement where it talks about municipal services. But did I, did I hear you say it, you put a time limit on that, on municipal services charges or?
So, in, in our typical agreement, including the other four agreements you just approved, uh, that with this requirement, this municipal services requirement, which is only occurs if you become tax exempt, that is, it, 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 it extend into forever. It's just, there's no termination date for this promise. It runs with the land forever. But in this case, the developer would like to limit that to only, uh, it's specified in the agreement is, is January 1st, 2038.
Oh, okay. That, that's up for us to decide. Okay. I'm on board now. Hey, I'm caught up now. Thank you.
Um, a couple of thoughts I have are, um, I think that these exceptions that we've made are pretty, um, bold. I mean, like, we've never, right, I mean, at least to my knowledge, not required a building to be built, not had an assessment guarantee, not had a personal guarantee, not required insurance and not had this tax agreement. I mean, that's a lot of things that we've not, not done in the past. And, um, I'm just thinking about the other developers that we've worked with, the ones that are still on this call tonight that have had their agreements go before this. Um, and, you know, we've had others in the past that we've had to really negotiate on the personal guarantee and these assessment guarantees. And I'm, I'm struggling with not having any of those in this contract. So I'm, I'm trying to, to walk through, and that's a lot of things that we're giving on. So technically there could be nothing built there for this agreement.
Right. And, and one of the things that I guess I would say is that I can, I can only tell you why we were comfortable, uh, recommending approval without those things. Um, one, all of the other agreements that you just approved are properties in which the village invested, um, and purchased the land and created the park. This particular parcel is, was privately held, is privately held. It's not one of our parcels. So that's number one. Number two, we've got a business that's existing that, um, hopes to expand and is trying to sort of get under the wire here, uh, before the end of the TID, uh, which we, you know, are happy about, uh, them, them going through the effort to do this. But it's, I guess it's, it's not as clear that there, you know, it's, that, well, the end of a TID requires a lot of carts to get ahead of horses. In the sense that, you know, if we had a few more months here and, um, Swanson, MC Swanson had the ability to move their project a little further in terms of their financing and all the other considerations, timing and everything else, we probably would have a more robust deal with them. That's why this is a really more of a prospective deal. Uh, if, if it happens, this is what occurs. So there's a lot of factors that are in combination there that result in us at least having that comfortable. They hold the rights to this property. I, I can't say I know if they've closed on it yet. But I know they hold the rights to it, uh, at least in, under an option. And there wasn't going to be a TIF incentive for this property unless we did something like this. And so it was sort of a, a last chance incentive to get something going on this property. And like I say, it's, if we just had a few more months, you'd probably be looking at a developer agreement that was more, more detailed and had more of these requirements. So, uh, but at this point, I just don't know if they're really ready to commit quite to the level that that would require. Um, but we still recommend approval because it's your last chance to do it. And, uh, uh, actually this meeting is your last chance to do it. And, you know, if, if we don't approve it and the building doesn't get built, we are where we are. And if we do approve it and the building doesn't get built, we're in the same place. So I guess from a village's, from the village's perspective, that's why we feel like it's worth while to, to let them have a little bit of flexibility and figure out if it makes sense for them moving forward.
Thank you. That's helpful, Larry.
And, and if they don't build, they collect no incentive, correct?
That's right.
So there's no risk for us from that perspective? It's not costing us anything until they build?
It's not costing us anything. The only risk is if they don't build, we've now lost our ability to incentivize based on increment payments, uh, for this site. And so it, it, it makes it more likely the site will remain, um, un, undeveloped. So that's, that's our risk. Our risk is that we want, you know, if you want, if you want to see this happen, um, there is no other deal that's going to come forward in the short term that could substan this one. It's this one or none. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion on this from board members?
I would just note too that, um, this isn't our property. So it's not like it's being held up. Like our property is not being held up. Like this is the only opportunity that we'd have to incentivize this property, I guess.
Right, because we couldn't do a reduced price sale like we could on some of these others if they fought for it.
Other thoughts on this?
Um, could I ask a question of, uh, Mike Swanson or someone from Atlantis Valley Foods? Then, um, I guess, are, do you guys have ultimate? Uh, do you, do you believe that after you build this and maybe you outgrow it, that you envision the building going to a nonprofit, whether it be a church or some other type of? Uh, something?
I, I, as far as I'm concerned, I, I recognize, um, the, the investment. A- after we've investment in the property and the improvements, I recognize the position the Cottage Grove is in and I, you know, and I would, you know, fully, fully stand behind, you know, our, you know, whatever we can do to make sure, um, it remains taxable. Uh, so, you know, it's, it in, in, in our position as business owners and that kind of thing and investing in growth, it just seemed that perpetuity versus a limit on that period of time was more appropriate, um, especially when, you know, we're, we're investing in the property upfront, um, it's not, it's not the village's. Um, and then we're investing in the building to exceed the minimum, uh, to take advantage of the, of the TIF credit. So, um, or, you know, we're fully on board in building this, you know, we've already invested quite a bit of money in planning and so forth and plans. And we've, we've gone through approvals in both planning and architectural, so. Uh, you know, this is, this is gonna happen. There's no question about that. Frankly, from a business standpoint, there's, we, we don't have any choice. We, we need to, we need to build something and move into something larger, so. So it, there's no intent in this whatsoever that, you know, it's, it's gonna be sold a, a tax exempt. And then that's not the, the impetus here, so.
I, I, I can probably speak to it 'cause I, I'm, I, I represent the Swansons. And like a lot of things, you can blame the lawyers, um, particularly me on this one. Um, unlike the other development agreements that you saw tonight, this is one where the, the village is not extending any initial money. There, there's no land right down on this one. Uh, the Swansons are buying this land from a private party. There, there's no upfront cost to the village at, at all. Um, i- if the Swansons pay property taxes for approximately five years, they will be rebated back to them. The, the concern that if, and if they don't build it, then they don't get anything. So from our perspective, there, there's, there's no financial risk to the village. As to the tax agreement, it, it, the, the reality for us is just perpetuity is, is a long time. And this would be recorded, it would be on the, the title to the real estate. So if the Swansons ever wanted to sell it to anybody, taxable or not, like all encumbrances on real estate, it, it shows up in there. And we have no way of knowing what buyers in the future may or may not perceive the, the impediment to value that would be. So the, the fewer encroachments or impediments we can have on land, the, the better. Um, and here, uh, Larry and Matt were, were quite insistent that they needed some tax guarantee. And we thought 10 years was enough period of time to sufficiently ensure the village would recoup any tax that was rebated to the Swansons, but it wouldn't needlessly encumber the property forever. And, and that was sort of the essence of the compromise here.
Okay. Um, one other question, just how long have you, um, been in the village at the, um, at the property across from this one?
The, uh, 300 Commerce Parkway building that we're in currently, we built about five years ago.
Okay. Wow, you've really outgrown it that fast, huh?
We have. I, um, growth, the growth is, growth is great, but, uh, we certainly expected to be in it longer than that, but, um, and that building, you know, that building is for sale at present, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this agreement?
I just have a quick question for Larry. Um, Larry, does this, if we were to agree to this tax agreement, um, around being taxable for the 10 years after 2028, does that give us any, um, concern for precedent setting with any other potential future developers?
Well, there's, when we use the word precedent, what, what we typically think about is are we required to do something because of something we did in the past? And the answer would be no. Are we going to have to answer the question, uh, to others? Sure. You know, we, we, but, but, but there are a number of provisions. You know, we didn't do a personal guarantee in the moving out deal because it was a, you know, we, we had, we thought we had reason to waive that. We didn't do, you know, each, each project, you know, is a little different and for specific and unique reasons. Um, and, you know, I, 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 I don't, we'll have to answer the question, but it will not, this will not bind us to do the same um, in any other agreement.
I think the concern is that it, Larry, it's that, that question, and I, I don't wanna speak for Sarah, but I think the question's coming more from a, will we start to see these clauses pop up more often? Right? When developers, you're like, well, you know, Mr. Swanson doesn't have a, you know, it's a 10 year, you know, tech or, uh, clause, you know, are we gonna start seeing 15, 20? Are we gonna start splitting hairs on years? Right? I think my concern is, you know, we're consistently hearing from constituents about, you know, how high property taxes are here, right? And so if you take one piece of property out of the mix, it's tax exempt, right? Then you don't have to pay property taxes. And we all have to share the burden, right? And like, to Mr. Cole's point, I get it that it's, you know, perpetuity is forever, right? This would follow it forever. But at the same time, it's like, and, and, and I realize that, you know, Mr. Swanson wants to, you know, hopefully owns this property forever and, you know, goes on forever. But it's, it, you know, some of this is a little bit of a crystal ball exercise. Around, you know, 25 years from now, if we, if we, you know, or 30 years, you know, pick whatever time horizon you want, it is owned by a, a, a tax exempt entity that's, you know, X number of dollars that are not available for property tax, right? So like there's, I have some concerns, but at the same time, it's like, hopefully Mr. Swanson owns this property forever. And this is, this is all a moot point, right? So it's, yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking here and I'm, I'm kinda rambling, but I, I, I think, I guess my question is, is we're not necessarily, we don't have to be stuck on perpetuity. We don't have to be stuck on 10 years. And I'm, I guess I'm curious between you, Mr. Cole and, and Larry, like, these have been ongoing conversations as I understand it, correct?
Right. Another way, another way to look at this is, you know, that, that there could have been, you know, a, a church or a benevolent society, or someone could have purchased this land from a seller and, and built a church here. And we wouldn't have, uh, any, any tax, uh, we wouldn't be creating a TIF incentive for them to do that. But as Mr. Cole said, you know, the, the first and most important concern that we have is that it stays taxable through the time the village recoups whatever rebate it provided on the, on the property. And, and I agree that, that, that what they're offering should in fact provide that. Um, after that, it's, I would give it about a 5% chance or less, maybe 2% chance that it ever becomes tax exempt because there's so few entities. Because there's so few entities, but it's just one of these things that in the past, the board has pushed pretty hard on. I would say this, um, almost every developer agreement, as you can see from the others you approved today. We push on some things, the developer pushes on some things, and at the end of the day, we tell them what we could recommend for approval and what we couldn't. And generally, um, we try to be really fair and even handed, and how we do that, every once in a while, a developer says. Well, if that's the case, then let's go to the board for their determination, uh, without staff approval for a, a, a. And, and, and that's what happened here, uh, it's pretty rare that that happens, usually we get to the, to, to a final point where. You know, we all pound our chests and we get, we, we get a deal done, and we did that here, except just for this one, this one provision, and. I agree with Mr. Cole and Mr. Swanson that the primary, primary, the utmost purpose of those tax agreements is to ensure that. That, that, uh, uh, that they're in place for long enough to recoup the rebate. After that, it's about future, uh, as you said, David, it's, it's about, you know, the future taxability of the property and what that would mean for the community. Um, so there's a little bit more flexibility in terms of how big, it's not as big of, the second, that second part is clearly, we would all agree, is not as big of a parody as the first part. So, there's some room, there's some room here, this isn't, uh, um, you know, even a major component of, of what we've done in this deal, but, uh. I think it's just, it's just something where we wanted to have, have the board decide, as opposed to us giving a recommendation on this.
And, and one, one additional thought there too, on, on the unlikelihood of this becoming. Um, an issue for the village beyond the twenty thirty eighth, uh, time period is. I- i- if Atlantis Valley were to s- sell the property, I mean, it, it more than likely would still be. Someone that would pay taxes, and if it, even if it were potentially, you know, a, a church as an example, like we've been talking about. Um. I'm not even sure our zoning would allow for a church, so they would have to get a zoning, a zoning change, so I think the, the village still has. Has hooks as far as the use for the property. Um, so that there's other protections there, even if it ever came to that.
It's a commercial kitchens, so you could have theoretically, uh, a non-for-profit food organization. Right, I mean, like, I, I get where you're coming from, Matt, but I.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense too.
One of the, one of the things, one of the things that, to, to point out, that I think it's, is absolutely critical to understand in this case is. There's a lot of different entities that are not-for-profit, not-for-profit relates to whether you're, you know, you, I, I, it's under the, 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 the umbrella of the income tax. That, and, and, and then there's a, a minority that are, are, are real estate property tax exempt. Which is a much, much smaller, uh, group of potential users. So there's, you know, I, I represent a number of not-for-profit businesses that own real estate, and their biggest expense is paying their real estate taxes. They are not property tax exempt, uh, and, and so, which, think about it in that sense, that it's a very limited. Uh, very limited subset of potential property uses that are, that are, uh, tax exempt, which is, wh- which really argues for. Adopting a tax agreement, because it's such a smart, most developers are like, well, what's the chances that would ever be an issue? That's not gonna cost me anything, and, and they move on, even if they don't like it. Uh, but it's also an argument for, you know, it's also maybe not the most important thing we put in developer agreements, because it's so unlikely, so. That cuts both ways, and, uh, it'll just have to let us know how you'd like to proceed.
What if, I just have a thought here, based on Sarah's question, can we? Instead of ten years, can we do twenty, just to, so that we avoid the precedent setting, precedent meeting new, other developers come and ask for this?
You can, you can approve a motion on whatever you choose tonight, you can, you can completely eliminate this, you can. Do tid, end of the tid, you can do it, end of the tid plus ten, twenty, thirty, forty, or perpetuity. Yeah, but, that's, I, I mean, and it's up to the president as to whether or not you would like to. Sort of engage in a discussion with the developer, but, uh, whatever it is, whatever you approve tonight is gonna be the last chance you get a chance to touch it, so. Um, final and best offer is where we are right now.
And, and David, from staff perspective, I'm sure Larry and I would be, i- if someone made that argument as a developer. And they referenced precedent and, and pointed to this example. We, we would argue that they wouldn't meet that precedent because they, they hadn't owned C.L. Swanson in the village, they hadn't. Um, they likely hadn't owned and, and built on village property five years prior. Um, so there, there would be plenty of things that we could say, you know, this isn't precedent setting at all. I mean, that, that's at least how, n- not to, not to publicly explain how we would, uh. Negotiate that, but that, that would be, that, that would probably be our strategy there.
There will never be a exact same fact scenario as this one, and I'd tell them to go. Make it through Mike Swanson, if they could make it through Mike Swanson, then they could come back to me and talk about it, and I'm pretty sure they wouldn't be coming back.
And I, I wasn't making a motion, I'm just trying to learn here, right, as we go. Kind of understand, like, what's possible, what isn't possible, I think, I, I agree with you, Matt, like, the. And, and Larry, like, the possibility that this happening, and we're talking about one percent of one percent here, this is not a. We're splitting hairs here, I, and I fully appreciate that, right? Um, so I, I'm just trying to learn here, so I, I think I'm good.
I have one more question. If I can, so, the current property that Atlantis Valley Foods owns, is that one able to be sold to a nonprofit?
Great question, Melissa, that, that, this provision was not part of the developer agreement. That was adopted, uh, under previous council, um, in, in two thousand and five. Um, that, that property is subject to a number of requirements. That this new property will not be, in fact, is still subject to those today, because it's in the same tid and the tid hasn't ended. So it's a little bit of give and take here, um, you know, the, the, there's. You wouldn't think the same people negotiated on either side when you look at both deals. I, I, I wanted to say, I wanna make one last point. Um, but, and, and, in any, in any situation like this where people have strong opinions or feelings. Um, ab- about any of these types of provisions and just, uh, the role of government and business in- incentives and, and so on. This was a really good negotiation and discussion with this, with these folks, um, everything that was done. You know, as you can tell from their engagement, both from their attorney and from Mike tonight, everything that they're doing is reasoned. Um, it's based in, uh, you know, logic, and it, it, you know, there were a couple, we had a couple blips along the way where we may be. Miscommunicated a couple times, but overall, um, you know, this is a business worth keeping in the village and. I wanna make sure that we do what we can to make them successful, uh, so I would just. Have that be my last point, other than if there's other questions, but, um, th- this has been a good process. Even though we end up in front of you asking you to, to play, uh, uh, arbiter here of our disagreement. Don't think of this process as being any less robust or, you know, in any way negative as compared to the others.
And, and if I may, I, you know what, we want to stay in Cottage Grove, I mean, that's, that's, that's our aim here, we wanna develop this property. Gonna build a forty-six thousand square foot building there, um. And, uh, and I, and as Matt alludes, this will be the third, the third property that, uh. Uh, we have developed in, in Cottage Grove over the years, so.
Uh, any other discussion or questions from board members? Otherwise, a consideration of a motion for this one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the developer agreement with MC Swanson Properties, um, to undertake development of Atlantis Valley Food Property with the. Um, how am I not gonna say it right? So Larry, you can wordsmith this, but with the, um, as proposed. Tax agreement for the property to remain taxable for ten years beyond the TIF. Did I, or how, how bad did I do that?
We, uh, we absolutely understand what you mean.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, well said, Sarah, thank you, Troy, um, any further discussion?
So with that motion, I just wanna understand, so it's at least ten years, like, it'll remain taxable as long as a. Entity that is taxable is in that property or owns that property.
Right, so, so I guess, so it wouldn't.
Hang on.
We'll be short-. Is it after, so, if the church knows that they owe municipal service payments for some doors?
Until January first, twenty thirty eight, right, based on this motion.
Okay. Got it.
By the way, for Lisa's purposes, we're just gonna say January first, twenty thirty eight.
She's nodding, all right, that's motion second to approve the agreement, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries.
I'd just like to take a moment and thank all the, our development team staff that was involved with all these agreements and. Um, in particular, our, our, uh, legal team, Larry Pano Paki and both, uh, Rick Manthee, to pull all this together and. Essentially, um, a little over five days was really impressive, so. Thanks, everybody.
Uh, well said, Matt, um, I don't think many municipalities will have five development agreements on their agenda evening, so. That's pretty impressive, and, um, just a nod off to the growth in the village and a lot of, um. Developers coming to the village and having interest here, and certainly we, uh, welcome them with open arms, uh, cause they provide jobs and. Services for all of us, um, so that's.
It's also worth, it's also, sorry, John, it's, it's also worth noting that, um. The C.L. Swanson business that, that we mentioned, that was Mike's, uh, first in, in the village, is the. Current municipal services building that, that we, um, you know, are currently enjoying to this day, so thanks, Mike, it's a great.
Right, you're welcome, that was a nice building.
All right, with that, we'll move on to, uh, new business, and that is to, just first there is discuss and consider escrow agreements to. Uh, assure distribution of expended funds regarding tid number five. To, uh, County N and Main Street Bike Path Extension Project, uh, subject to Wisconsin DOT approval.
Thank you all.
Yep, thanks, Mike, have a good night.
I can start, I can start this one, um, so th- this is, this is another. Uh, tid five action item to, um, get this in place ahead of the deadline on Wednesday. We would be, th- th- this was, uh, a, a recommended way to. Get the tid funds from the tid into an escrow, which would, which would meet the requirements of the, um, expenditure period. And allow us to construct the bike path improvements at a later date. Uh, and still be able to use the, the earmarked funds that we've all discussed here, which were to be, uh, cash funded from the TIF district. And, and this would be through, uh, Minona Bank, and, and I'll just say, the, the approval tonight, we'd ask with. With the ability for staff to fill in some of the, the minor blanks that we need to, um, finalize yet.
All right, thanks, Matt, um, and again, this is that phase two of the bike path along Main Street, um, it's gonna be coordinated with some. Other improvements too, we're gonna do some curb and gutter, storm sewer stuff with this, uh, it's gonna be obviously. More safe, particularly with the Cottage Grove Commons development and moving out, uh, on the other side of the road. Um, and this will be a nice, large path that will lead all the way down through Commerce Park. Across to TT, and then, you know, if somebody might, wants to make their way over to the County Park, County Park, they can do so as well. So just adds another, um, transportation, um. Option for a lot of folks, and so I think the current paths in the village are being well-used, and, uh. Think a lot of people are enjoying those, so that's what we're trying to do here. Go ahead, David.
Matt, when would this break ground?
Um, it's a little bit dependent on, we're, we're, we're waiting, we're hopeful that we'll get a grant award, um. Late summer, early fall time period from Dane County. Um, JJ, does that sound? Accurate to you?
Yep, I believe they're awarding late July, so.
So there's, there's a, a slight possibility that that could be turned around and, and the, the project could be bid, and we could. Um, get someone out there doing the work, uh, later this year, but it's, it's, it's more likely to be a spring of twenty twenty-two project. Ju- just given, you know, the busy construction season and starting that late, and, um. That, that's, I, I think where things are moving.
Uh, what happens if you don't get the grant, JJ?
Um, we'll cover that, uh, with others this, this fall, I would assume, it would just be, uh, more financing on the village. Uh, assuming we wanted to move forward with the project.
Well, the, the other consideration, the, the, the board could, could, could amend the scope of. Of the work that Public Works is recommending too, so the, you know, certainly. Uh, JJ and the Public Works Committee are, are recommending the additional work that, uh, President Williams mentioned, but. Um, that's also a consideration, but to JJ's point, it would, it would likely be an increased borrowing, but with, with this approval. We will for sure have four hundred fifty thousand dollars of tid cash at a later date to be used for this purpose.
Okay, thanks.
Um, and if. Uh, if for some reason there's leftover funds in the escrow. Um, after the bike path is completed, then what happens to those funds?
That's a good question, I don't think that, given, uh, given the cost of the. The project with everything that Public Works is, uh, proposing, um, it's a near impossibility.
Good, I guess.
Uh, the story about this area has, it hasn't been urbanized, and in order to be safe, you need curb and gutter, for instance, and you need to get rid of the water, so you need this. Storm connectors and everything else, so it's, it's, it's needed, um, and then on top of that, some of the road is failing too in that area as well. So Public Works has been covering all this, trying to see, uh, what makes sense, and it makes sense to do it all if we can. Um, to get it done right, and, cause you don't wanna put a bike path in, for instance, and not have. A, a curb cut out, so, cause again, it's just, it's easier to, it's a little harder to jump a curb, um, with the cars. And just go right off and do a path, so that's why Public Works is proposing that. Uh, plus with all the additional, um, residents in this area too, and it's just an amenity, we think. Will be sa- safer getting crossed for any of the restaurants or whatever in the Commerce Park, or maybe they're going to work, for instance, which would be great too. And they're, they're walking or biking.
All, all, all very good points, and it connects those businesses to, to, um. The residents, uh, um, on the southern end of the community too, so we can all walk there. Um, and, uh, just on a side note, uh, some high school students will be able to go work at places in Commerce Park too. And get there safely, that might not have a driver's license, so I am super excited for this bike path.
With that, Melissa, is that a motion?
Yes, if nobody else has any questions, I can definitely, uh, make a motion to approve. The, uh, agreement and escrow ear, oh, I guess, how do I do this? Uh, approve, motion to approve the escrow agreement to assure distribution of expended funds regarding. Tid five County Highway and Main Street Bike Path Extension Project, subject to Wisconsin DOT approval. With, um, uh, staff's ability to fill in the minor blanks. Does that cover everything? Do I need a specific four hundred fifty thousand dollars? Did I cover everything? Do I need a specific four hundred fifty thousand dollars amount in there too?
Well, that's the agreement you're referencing. So.
Yeah, okay.
A, a good motion as far as I'm concerned.
Yep.
Okay, great.
I agree. Thanks, Melissa. Is there a second?
Thank you.
You did. All right. Thank you, Ed. Um, any further discussion on this? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right. Uh, moving on, other new business items, discuss the annual village board prioritization process. So, uh, we usually get this going about this time and this kind of leads us right into, um, when we get into the, later in the summer, for, early fall, uh, the budget considerations. So this is kind of how we worked at least in the last few years. Um, Matt, anything to add?
I do, I do, this will be real quick, but, um, the, the first step of the process and I'll, I'll make sure I email the board here, uh, tonight or tomorrow with uh, the, the full detail of everything that was submitted by everyone, um, including the, the list itself, but the, the detail behind the process last year. So everyone has a, uh, ma- maybe that triggers new ideas for this year or, or someone wants to resubmit, um, a, a priority. So I, I'll get that to you. But, um, in the meantime, if everyone could submit to me, send me an email as to your, uh, a description of the priorities that you would like considered by the board. And if you get that to me by, uh, May twenty-eighth, I'll compile everything and then, um, we can get that out to the board and, and then, you know, the next step would be to, you know, start ranking those, that list as it gets put together. So, um, anyway, pretty, pretty, pretty straightforward, but certainly reach out to me if you have, uh, any questions. Um, I know we have a new board member, David, so you haven't been through this before. Feel free to reach out and, but it's basically something that we'll, we'll handle over the next few board meetings and at the end, we'll have a, a ranked list with a description of, of items and staff will, will use that when we, when we budget and, uh, put our staff goals together during performance reviews.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt on this? Otherwise, that's, you got your assignments, everybody. Leave me. Um, we'll move on then to item eight is reports from village boards, commissions and committees. The first one up is the library planning committee and that is Melissa.
Um, we met, uh, on Wednesday, the fifth, and we met with the president of the Friends of the Cottage Grove Library, um, who identified multiple fundraising opportunities, um, which we will present during a presentation to the board, which we hope to be in July. Um, at one of the July meetings, hopefully the first one. So. It's, it's coming along.
All right. Thanks, Melissa. Any questions for Melissa? All right. We'll look forward to the presentation. Next then is the ad hoc sustainability committee and that would be Heidi.
Sure, thanks. Uh, we met on the eleventh and we had a brief presentation from, uh, Legacy Solar Co-op, uh, which is another group buy program offered in Dane County. Um, they're looking to do something similar to Madison, um, which you may remember was another group buy program for Dane County. Um, they started, uh, kind of in Western Dane County and then expanded where Madison started in Madison and then expanded. They basically do the same thing, um, help, um, home buyers navigate financing, group buys. Um, so they're looking to do similar type of outreach in Cottage Grove to help get people information about, uh, group buy options for solar. Um, they have webinars for information, um, that you can view live or recorded on demand. Uh, so they're just, uh, looking to do some outreach and perhaps participate at, uh, some of our community events, um, potentially. So, um, let's see, we also talked about solar ordinances and we moved forward on two ordinances that'll go to plan commission and just laying out setbacks, um, different requirements, uh, because our old ordinances were kind of out of date. So those will go for public hearing at plan commission next before they come here. Um, our Earth Day Clean Up the Grove event went well and rain barrels are still for sale for a couple more weeks. So if you haven't ordered yours, you can still do that. Um, we're also working on some sustainability Facebook posts and some of those will talk about rain gardens. So, uh, the committee is interested in getting more information on how residents could build a rain garden, uh, how that helps kind of the environment and, uh, help with education on that and connect with resources on how to actually do it. Um, then we also talked about a bike friendly community certification. And that's a, I think I mentioned it previously. It's kind of a comprehensive look at your bicycle infrastructure and ordinances and, um, education, uh, about sharing the road with bicyclists. Uh, so that's something that the committee is going to keep talking about and we might be referring things to other committees to consider as well. Um, it's, uh, I guess, uh, we're working on some of the things already with our bike path connections. So I think it fits in with, uh, some of the initiatives we already have going on. Um, our next meeting is June eighth.
All right. Any questions for Heidi? All right. Thanks, Heidi. Uh, then next up then will be, uh, Public Works, which, uh, is also on the eleventh. We have a discuss and consider item on here, but I'll, I'll touch on a few things from Public Works, allow JJ to, to correct me and then, uh, and then we'll get to that particular item. So we met again on the eleventh and a little bit of an odd day for us, but we had a special meeting in there in late, uh, April. So we kind of got jumbled up a little bit. Um, covered again, um, to Heidi's point, the bike paths of this, in this case, Glacial Drummond Bike Path. Um, Kevin went through some things there. Um, he's dotting i's, crossing t's to get everything done with the DOT grant. Um, looking to do some, perhaps some soil borings along Clark and Grove, um, to take, check some things out there. Um, we talked about the, um, bid from RG Houston, which we considered tonight, where again, this is just the bike pack path portion of, of that. Uh, the, the Grove Street and the rest of Clark Street would come along, uh, once we have sorted out the details on the storm sewer pond with the Wyden Ossland property. And so that's holding us up a little bit there. And it may hold us up to spill into next year, but we're hoping, cross our fingers, we can still get something sorted out yet this year. Um, then we, uh, touched a little bit on the, uh, Bus Road, uh, and Cottage Grove BB project. And again, this is to put signal lights at, uh, Bus Road for the, particularly for the school. Um, so there's, uh, information going out to residents. There's a, uh, May twenty-fifth update meeting on construction. RG Houston was awarded that particular, um, project. And so they're going to kind of start walking through all that for anybody that's interested on the twenty-fifth. Um, then, uh, JJ touched on the rain barrel, uh, sale as well. It's going well, as, as Heidi alluded to, and, uh, also talked about in sustainability. Uh, and we do have a few more weeks for folks to, to get, uh, their orders in. Um, and then, uh, we discussed and considered a West Oak Street project. Um, JJ and Kevin went off, uh, uh, with, with the direction of the project, Public Works Group, uh, looking at, because it's a very wide road, um, and we're looking at potential, trying to incorporate a bike path or some sort of bike path slash ped bath there. Uh, this would be done, again, depending on, uh, capital budget, everything is proposed for next year. Uh, it's in, it's got some spots and it's kind of in rough, rough shape. So, um, you know, we want to make sure that, we're hoping that that can happen. Um, but with that, uh, ped path consideration there, it'll be a little pricer than initially, um, was proposed in the capital plan. So that's, that'll be coming through, um, budget discussion. Um, and then JJ followed that up with a capital projects, Public Works Plan, um, kind of laying that out for financial management plan. And that, again, he's just getting his things in a row for, for the upcoming budget when it comes up later this fall and, and getting the thoughts of the committee there. Um, talked about perhaps moving a, a project around or two, um, and provided the input there. Um, committee recommended that we do go with RG Houston for the, uh, Glacial Drummond Path, the bike portion. And it goes up, um, and, uh, it's up for consideration for this, this board, uh, tonight. Um, thinking in the future, uh, JJ was talking about, uh, potentially, um, differences or maybe a new look at our, um, sidewalk ordinance. And so that discussion is ongoing. Um, again, probably a couple of years out. We've got to finish up phases of all the grinding and, and improvements that they can have five or six year plan right now that we're going through. But uh, this is looking more forward thinking based on some, some new thoughts in there, um, really considering bikes, pa- bike sidewalk, excuse me, uh, as part of the infrastructure of a community and, and the thoughts there are changing in municipalities. So covered that. We had the, um, rundown of the engineer's report, director's report, um, approved a couple of meeting minutes and that was, it set the next meeting for June first. JJ, Kevin, did I, I, excuse me, leaned over all that, but, uh, there was more discussion than just that. But, um, anything I missed?
No, that was, that was a comprehensive summary, John.
Um, and, and in regards to the discuss and consider here, um, Kevin, do you just want to give a quick brief summary of the, that bid for RG Houston that the committee recommended this board consider?
Yep, sure can. Um, so we received bids for the, uh, the, uh, grant portion of the project. Um, we received four bids. They, uh, seem to be pretty competitive and, and everything. So we were recommending RG Houston as the low bid. Um, the only thing that the motion needs to include is that it's subject to basically DOT approval. I have talked with DOT and I have submitted the request to award to DOT as well. And they don't see any red flags. It came in under budget, um, or, you know, basically right at budget is a little under. So they just didn't see anything that was glaring that, you know, that there was going to be any concerns on their end. And they said RG Houston's a good contractor. So they've, they've just got to run it through the process, uh, on their end. So, um, there was nothing that stood out to them. So there's, I have no reason to think that, that it won't, um, be approved by DOT, uh, if there's any other documents they need, but we had to submit, I had to work with RG Houston and get like their, um, um, DBE commitments and different things like that that have to be submitted, um, as part of like the grant of anything that they tracked and all that kind of, uh, information. So, um, otherwise, I guess, if anybody's got any questions with the bid seemed pretty straightforward, like I said, pretty, pretty competitive overall for, you know, starting to get toward the middle of the year and everything right now. So, um, we're pretty happy with, uh, at least what we received.
Any questions from board members?
I was wondering, what's the start date for the construction? Is it after the festival? I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, we, when I, I talked to Lieutenant as well, but I mean, you can usually figure at least a month of contracting and with this going through DOT, it could be a little bit longer. So whether it'll be after the fourth of July, but it would at least be after the festival, was the plan.
Can I ask, um, can I ask, John, uh, the meeting for Bus Road on the twenty-fifth, are citizens that have property that are, you know, butting up to that, are, are they all getting letters, uh, about the meeting?
Yes, they are. Anybody within four hundred feet of the road gets it. Plus, plus it's just like any other public meeting, it's posted. Um, I've shared it with, uh, the town as well. Um, so.
Okay.
They're well, you know, at least they're, the board is aware of it. So, you know, if someone reaches out to them, they can let them know. But, um.
Sure, sure. All right. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the award, uh, of the Glacial Drummond Trail Project to RG Houston, subject to the Wisconsin DOT approval.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Troy. Thank you, Melissa. Uh, any further discussion?
Yeah, yeah, Kevin, I, I just had a really quick question. I'm, I'm looking at a map here. Um, which side of Clark Street is this gonna, to be honest, the north side or the south side of Clark Street? Because it says it's going to cut through Bocken Park. So I'm just trying to make sense of the route.
Nope, that's understandable. So it basically at County N, it's going to be on the south side of Clark Street and it'll stay on the south side of Clark Street all the way. Um, it's going to be on the south side of Clark Street all the way through. But once it gets basically past the parking lot of Fireman's Park, it'll kind of start, if you want to call it, diverging a little bit away from the street a little bit more to kind of, and then it'll cross. Um, JJ, you can help me with the gentleman's name that's on the committee there that, uh, lives on the corner, but it'll be south of his property as it goes to, uh, in the Bocken Park.
Okay.
Chris Miller.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, that's all I needed. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Chris Nelson.
Yeah, you're a little late there, Sean. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. You gotta have Sean a little grief. That was for JJ.
John, just, uh, one, one comment, um, for, for Troy regarding the neighborhood meeting for B, for BB and Bus. Um, all those property owners with that notice also have the direct contact email phone for, um, both JJ and Kevin, if they have any questions to ask us, you know, directly, if they, for some reason can't attend the neighborhood meeting or anytime during the construction process. So.
Thanks for the clarity, Matt.
I do have one other comment on Public Works. Um, I do really like the idea of the sidewalk ordinance change. So I definitely, uh, will be looking forward to hearing more about that, um, making sure that all residents, um, you know, equal access to safe sidewalks and, um, having a resident be able to pay the half of repairs. I don't think that should be a, a significant barrier to having a safe sidewalk outside. I think it is part of infrastructure that, uh, village, you know, municipality provides. So I look forward to hearing more about that.
Yep. Uh, and the committee gave thumbs up to JJ to keep pursuing that too. So. Thanks, Heidi. All right. Um, then we'll move on to, uh, Plan Commission. And I'll take a stab at this and Melissa and others can jump in as I move through here, but, um, so as well as some of the developers too. Um, first item we covered was a, and it's a discuss and consider here, was a request to approve an ETJ, which is a certified survey map, um, for Christopher and Angela or, or, uh, located at four eight five zero Pierce Road in the town of Sun Prairie. Um, Plan Commission approved this. Uh, again, they want to divide their property, think in half and, and develop, you know, probably sell the other half for, for development or whatever. Um, and this is again, in the town of Sun Prairie. Aaron, any other comments?
Um, no, really, it's on the far northeast edge of our ETJ and it really doesn't affect the village very much at all. So we had no conditions or objections.
Yep. Any questions or comments from board members?
I'd make a motion to approve the request for an ETJ CSM from Christopher and Angela Brettner located at forty-eight ninety Pierceville Road in the town of Sun Prairie.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thanks, Heidi. Thanks, Sarah. Then any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right. Uh, next item then. All right, uh, next item then uh that the Plan Commission went through uh was to dis- to discuss and consider proposed precise implementation plan from Continental Properties for two hundred and eighty eight unit multifamily residential development located on parcels. Zero seven one one dash zero nine one dash nine three one zero dash one and parcel zero seven one one dash zero nine four dash eight five zero one dash zero and parcel zero seven one one dash zero nine four dash eight one zero zero dash four on the southeast corner of North um Main Street and Cottage Grove Road. Uh, right behind the Wisconsin Bank and Trust and um joining, butting up against the um Cottage Grove School. So I see Eric's on, um. Eric, do you want to walk through kind of what you walked through for Plan Commission?
Sure, uh, hi, I'm Eric Thomas Continental. Um, I'm just gonna go through tonight and really kind of compare, contrast um, some of the changes we made uh from the previous meetings, um, so. Let's see if I can share my screen with y'all tonight and just kind of walk you through. So I do have with me tonight, uh Max Sidecheck, who was our land planner, as well as um Ryan and Peter. For our engineer, traffic engineer, for any questions we might have um a little bit later on. But uh just to review, um, as we described the parcel here, right behind uh the bank, uh around a hard corner. Um, really more want to talk about just the changes from the concept plan we brought in. Gosh, I'll be back now, uh several months ago, back in um February, March, we had the clubhouse over here. We uh have changed that now at the uh both the general development plan and PIP uh presentation to show the clubhouse over here. That was to make sure that the majority of our traffic stayed off of um Main Street away from the school and stayed uh more in line here with uh Oak Street. Uh, we've also uh still have an entrance over here, a secondary access point um to Main Street, but again, we've kind of de-emphasized that. And we can talk a little bit more about the overall plan if, if anyone would like, but I think probably more importantly, we did talk to Parks uh late last month and talked about kind of our design uh for the, the proposed park back here. And as you saw in your packet, um during that, that meeting, we talked about having this kind of a main entrance to both a small and a large dog park. We talked about uh the ADA path uh that would come from the, the parking stall over here. Would come down here and, and at this entrance right here, the remainder would be a mowed path that would go around um the detention pond. Now, this would not be ADA, cause there is some slope in here that um, you know, they, it wouldn't be ADA accessible, but it would be accessible for the majority of everyone else that would want to just take a little turn past the park itself. Um, we do have to put some, a little bit more detail on here with some maintenance. Um, ten foot maintenance uh gates probably here and here, we're, have our engineer look at the, the right locations for that. Uh, we're putting in some stubs for future um water and probably sewer connection um over in this corner and over here, it's just for some water drinking fountains. Um, and uh we also discussed kind of the timing on this park. Since this is all gonna be part of the overall plan, what we planned on doing is uh grading this whole area this fall uh in late summer and then really re- seeding this down, getting a lot of the, the main pieces and seeing this all down so that it would have one full growing season through twenty twenty-two and then uh open it up and uh twenty twenty-three, so you'd have a, a good stabilized um area here before we'd be used for the, the public. Uh, we'd also during that time that we're waiting for stabilization, we'd put um the job trailer for the site, for the entire site right here in the parking lot to also um just refrain people from coming back there while it's in that stabilization mode. Uh, we'd have a trailer up here for our, temporarily before the clubhouse opens right here about three months before as well, that's also in there. That was pretty much it on the park, and I can talk a little bit about grades and about um, you know, how much has changed in here. Um, if anybody wants to go into that a little further. And then again, uh just those couple buildings that are along uh Cottage Grove Road. Um, it's hard to see in this elevation, but uh we have uh tannell stone here on the, on the first uh floor, it's a little easier to see the differences. Uh, this elevation, which could be normal elevation to the inside of the um community. But on the rear front, you can see that, that change in stone down here, it kind of changes that whole face a little bit to address staff comments that we had earlier in the uh plan review. Um, and then you have some three D elevations, but really that's the main changes that we've done. Um, as we've worked through the process with staff and yourselves on this project, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, any initial questions for Eric? Otherwise I'll turn it over to um Aaron and then Kevin uh to give their quick updates too as well on this project. Aaron, you want to kick it off?
Sure, got a staff report in the uh packet, a lot of it looks familiar um from a planning perspective, this hasn't changed a lot since the GDP. Um, as far as the approval conditions, the first two are, are carried over from the GDP. Uh, the third one refers to the park. In the discussions with the Parks Committee, what Continental is looking to do is pay to build the park and then turn the park over to the village as opposed to giving the village money so the village can build the park. Um, based on the cost estimates they've provided, it does appear that that would the value of the work to do that and the materials going into it would at least offset the fees that would be due. Um, but we'll just want to get receipts at the end to make sure it actually does um add up. Um, and then part of that third condition also is that they should continue working with the Parks Department on the final details and Eric has been doing that, uh talking to Sean about the, the dates and, and things like that, so. Uh, that's well on its way. Um, and then the, the final park design will be incorporated into the developer agreement. Fourth commission is at the park, um is being proposed to open in twenty twenty-three, giving it enough time for SOD to take root and things like that. Uh, the Parks Committee was fine with that, but we do just want to again, put that deadline in the developer agreement, so there's um a real deadline for it. Um, fifth one, if any lighting is provided in the dark park parking lot, we just don't afford a metric and um cut sheets for those lights, make sure we're not shining light on the neighboring property there. Um, currently they're not proposing lighting there, but that may be another detail that gets worked out with the Parks Committee. Um, and then finally, we just want to have a clean final copy of the precise implementation plan, submittal, picking up any conditions that have been applied. Um, with that, Kevin can go over his report.
Thanks, Aaron. Um, a lot of the comments I had in my staff review as well uh are similar from what's in the past, there's a few more detailed ones. Um, we're also uh recommending approval, uh working with you guys on uh, on going through these as well. Um, obviously they're, they're talking about doing a CSM of the property that'll divide the property and then obviously the, um, they'll have to pay MMSD fees for that. There's a few typos in the, in the plans, you know, at the stage they were at when they submitted it, um, just with some pavement thicknesses um and different things. There was no ADA stalls shown in the parking lot for the park, so more of a recommendation is work with parks as to what they need. Um, i- i- any ADA stalls in that area? There was um just small, well, they can be big, obviously, but drainage areas just showing where some reject curb and gutter, but I know that stuff is all basically in progress. Um, it's just uh some details in the plans. Um, uh, at Plan Commission, they noted that uh we, we, one of our comments was regarding the retaining walls and just verifying the design, and I know they're working with a structural on that. And we just want to verify that any of the tiebacks or how it's being constructed is obviously staying within the property or, and everything with that. There is some fairly decent sized retaining walls planned um in areas throughout, so. Other than that, some uh some maintenance things with uh some riprap and the scour stop. Um, we noted that the secondary construction access shown um shouldn't be used, basically we should try to limit the use obviously during peak school hours um with the backups on Main Street as well, so use the primary one obviously to the, the full extent possible. Um, in general, um, to summarize the traffic comments, um, in general, they provided um traffic impact analysis, we reviewed that. I do have uh Chad Wagner's an engineer at MSA and he worked with uh some of those that reviewed that. Um, so if there is some questions as well as uh those on Eric's team, they can answer some of those, but in general, their TIA um basically met what we would consider DOT standards, um went going through it, and there's really no traffic improvements that uh are necessary based on this development when it hits full buildout. So um, you know, they'll, obviously some of the backups on Main Street that we've discussed, you know, some of that's due to the crosswalk and the crossing guards and when school gets out, there is some immediate impacts of obviously the people, the drop offs and pickups there and everything. But in general, the, the roadway conditions that they submitted, everything should be fine, with the only comment we did have um was a little bit of striping on Main Street, um and actually I had a, um, we had a conference call today with Ryan, uh their engineer. Um, and one other person that uh is on their team regarding just a couple of comments and regarding stormwater, just so they could understand what comments we had on, on those as well, so I know they're working through those as well, so. Um, utility comments, basically in general, um, we talked about putting one eight inch, an eight inch main throughout uh one of the loops, basically connecting Main Street and Cottage Grove Road. And they will have to provide easements, um, the easements, um, I talked with their engineer today and when we've done these in the past, um, basically we're fine with getting the easements after basically construction, so if anything changes, then we don't have to edit documents. But it's just something that needs to be done so that the village has on file that, you know, they've got the right to access those since they're gonna be public mains and everything, so. Um. Let's see. There were some crossings that I know they're just working regarding storm and some sanitary that look like there could be some conflicts, so they're working through those. There is quite a few stormwater comments, um, in general, they just, at the time when they submitted this, they did not provide basically inlet capacities and storm sewer capacities at the time, and that's what we discussed today with the, with the engineer. And they're working toward that right now. Um, but they talked with Eric Thompson at MSA and know what he's after, basically. He's basically reviewing it to make sure that the hundred year storm event basically can pass through the pipes or overland and basically get to the pond without flooding people out is what it basically comes down to, so. They are in the process of doing that, they just didn't supply at that time the capacity calculations and everything for that, so that's something we can work through. However, we feel that the area that they have shown for detention, um, you know, as long as they can convey things to there um that it seems adequate as far as space needs and everything, so we don't see an issue with, that it won't work. Um, and then they're also providing more information on what infiltration is needed based on, on soil borings as well, so. Um, and then based on all that, they'll need a long-term maintenance agreement. Um, and then we indicated that uh the, the wetlands was previously done, but uh Eric had mentioned that Plan Commission that that's just recently been updated as well, so that will help them with their DNR permitting as well, so. Those are basically our comments.
All right, uh, thanks Aaron and thanks Kevin. All right, any questions from board members? Or comments?
Curious, uh, and I don't know if this goes to Kevin or Eric or who, but I think there were some concerns expressed uh by the fire chief at one time about um the ladder truck getting in there. Is that, is that still a concern from the fire department? I, I don't think the fire department's on, but I remember hearing that somewhere and I just figured it'd be a question mark for me. Is that a concern? And if, if yes, it's gonna be addressed, if, if it's not a concern, then this is an easy question.
That's a good question, David, and I can tell you that the fire chief was on the Plan Commission meeting and basically um he has reviewed it and said that it um, um, correct me if I'm wrong, John, if I misspeak anything, but he didn't have any concerns with they, they made some radius changes so that they, they felt they could get their trucks um around and everything, so he was at the Plan Commission meeting when they approved it there and the same question was asked.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing he commented on was just, and, and Eric uh was, you know, well aware this is, just making sure we place, they place trees. Uh, so as they get larger, they don't end up, you know, getting torn up from a truck coming through, but um they'll definitely be looking at that too as well, so.
And I, I think everyone's uh accurately um described uh chief's comments, but I just want to, uh Chief Archibald is on the call.
Oh.
If, if um, if there's anything else, but I, I think you guys have accurately described it and if, if not, Nick could speak up on that app, on that.
No, it was accurate.
Thanks chief for, for joining us too. Um, any other comments, questions from board members?
Um, I was wondering about the hundred year storm event and what happens with water after at a larger storm event. I know we're not required to go beyond that, but just wondering.
Um, I'd have to have Eric look at that. Um, I'm not sure where the overflow route of the, you know, like you said, beyond the hundreds, since the hundreds basically the, the ordinances that are in place right now. Um, so I'd have to honestly look at it unless Eric or his engineer happens to know offhand. Um, I don't know off top of my head um as to which direction it goes or anything.
Yeah, Ryan, uh, I think you're on right now, you got uh maybe, can you kind of describe what happened?
Yeah, we are, as Kevin mentioned, we're playing the size of a pipe for much of the property for the hundred year event to get the hundred year to the basin. But there is, there is overland overflow lines in, in addition to that pipe overflow uh to, to make sure that that the buildings are safe in those larger events.
Great, thank you. Um, I was also oh.
I'm sorry.
The other, another comment I recall from public meetings about cutting through, uh, traffic cutting through you know, other streets now like uh Oak Street and then I believe over to the west some. And I, I guess that isn't really a part of this approval, but maybe it's something we can keep an eye on or try to improve.
I would say for Oak Street, I would offer that we, we, we did look at the concern there and we have uh included signage for uh no through traffic on the new intersection we're creating um with the, the main driveway on Cottage Grove Road, and I believe that's Oak Street anyway, if I'm, if I'm speaking to the right roadway there. Uh, so, so that will help allow for enforcement to make sure that there, there's no cut through traffic from our development across Cottage Grove to Oak Street.
Great, thank you.
Uh, if I can, I think uh one thing Heidi, to your comment about the beyond the hundred year flood, I think that equals mosquitoes. And uh I do have a question about the park. Uh, how much uh the park is going to be mowed, what kind of maintenance is going to be evolved with a twelve point five acre park? And are there going to be any restroom facilities uh built at the same time for that?
Uh, we weren't proposing any restroom facilities at this point, what we were gonna be supplying were um some stubs for a future restroom if that's so desired by the, by the Parks Department. Um, also supplying stubs for um possibly future water stations for, for dog watering areas as well, so. We're providing for those options for the future, if those would um, you know, be a desire of the, of the city, but um at this point um, we're not looking to install those facilities.
Uh, thank you. Is, is that something we need to be considering as this uh, if this goes forward though, I guess is Graham going with that? Uh, I'm not sure if we're mowing twelve acres, if we're mowing four acres, if we're doing natural progress, it, it really doesn't say in this, in this. I, I'm thinking beyond just the, this being built, you know, what's it gonna do to the village from an infrastructure standpoint and uh maintenance?
Yeah, I guess with this plan, our original plan was that this would be a mowed path going all the way around um this facility and then you know, there'd be some occasional mowing that would have, have, have to happen within the dog parts themselves, I'm sure, uh from Sean's uh group at the Parks Department. Um, you know, we'll, we'll have to put, because that ADA path coming through, we'll have to put something here. We were not considering to put any um, any uh native grasses in here just because of the, the use and because you've got um some detention facilities in here, for the wetland area, we are leaving alone at For the wetland area, we are leaving alone at this point, so that would stay all natural. Um, again, there's options because of the, uh, park connections that are back here from the school. That at some point in time, you know, connection can be possible to be, to be made in here. But, um, that is one of the things we, we didn't want to do is mess with this area back here. Majority of, of this area to make it more usable is, um, a lot flatter. So it is going to have to be reseeded. And, you know, it's going to have some heavy use. We would anticipate heavy use here. So, um, we weren't looking at native plants at this point.
Uh, one thing the Parks Committee did mention is, uh, they wanted to limit the use of chemicals to treat the grass in the dog areas. Uh, just to reduce exposure of dogs to, um, chemicals there. So I guess. Other than that, there's gates for mowings. I don't know if Sean has anything else to add about, um, maintenance. But it is, um, a dog park is definitely something that we've heard a lot about at Parks Committee that, um, people aren't interested in having in our community.
Thanks, Heidi. Um, yeah, we, we definitely mow as needed inside the dog park. And anything around the retention pond area, if there were any, as Eric mentioned, there probably wouldn't be any native stuff planted there, but that would be. Uh, public works to maintain that. So, yeah, we're anticipating mowing as needed.
Eric, will there be any sort of pedestrian entrance on the west side or south side? Or will everybody have to go up there to the, to the northeast?
Everybody's going to have to go to the northeast. We did look at options back here, but. If you've been back here, you might notice that there's a pretty big slope coming off the school property. And it actually is a little bit retaining wall back in here. Um, uh, uh, this building right here, which is too small for me to see right now. Uh, but there's retaining wall here because of that slope coming down. So it'd be really difficult for people to come in straight in from the street. However, what might happen is that from the school parking lot to this area right back here is flat. Um, so we weren't proposing it at this time because we don't have any cross access to the school or anything. But, uh, if this gets to be a higher use on the weekends, uh, maybe something can be worked out with the school district. Because it would be pretty easy for them to walk in from the school park because you're above this hill, um, to enter the park this direction. So it's an option in the future. If, um, it becomes highly utilized, then we'll have more parking then as well, at least from the weekend standpoint.
I could, I could see pedestrians cutting through the parking lot. To, you know, to get up, I say all the way up there because I live on the, I live on the southwest side. So to me, that's all the way up and around the corner. Um, but I could, um, so I don't know if there, are there going to be sidewalks in, within your complex? I think I see sidewalks, but I can't tell and.
There, there's sidewalks. It is, it is, um, pedestrian friendly. I mean, it's intended more for the community. Um, we really don't want to have a lot of traffic coming through the community to get, um, back to the park. That's why we're trying to have the one main entrance back here. So it's possible for people to do that. They could walk through and cut through there, but they would have to go all the way through, um, the community and cut. Kind of more like an L shape and then come back and come through this way.
Is there any fencing, uh, near the retaining walls? It sounds like they're fairly tall.
Um, a lot of the fence, a lot of retaining wall, um, is going to be kind of in here. It does get a little bit higher in, in this area. Over here, we're actually, it's going the other way. We're kind of cutting it, we're actually cutting into the slope here a little bit. This is going to be, this area is going to be a little bit higher than the surrounding area to the, to the right of us over here. Um, I don't know, Ryan, V three, is there anything else you can think of right now? It's what I can think of at the top of my head for retaining wall.
Yeah, that's, that's all the retaining wall. Um, we, we don't have a fence called out on, on top of it right at this point. But I think as, as the structural team reviews that and as we take a look at that, that, and maybe something that comes necessary in a few, at a few points. It is, it is preserved, what removed from the, uh, the mown path, however. It's, it's hugging the, the property line pretty tightly.
Sure. I'm just thinking from a safety standpoint, uh, if you've got retaining walls, people can fall off. Um, and, and, and with the construction of the park, uh, is there any fencing to contain the dog parks? Uh, is that included?
Yes, all that fencing is included.
Thank you.
That is the fence around the dog park.
I'm sorry, I missed part of that question.
How, how tall is that fencing around the dog park?
So it's, uh, maybe about four feet tall, just a typical, um, you know, zoom in on this, be a typical, um, chain link fence that would go around the both sides. And this, this one would be almost an acre and then this one's about, uh, about three and a half acres roughly.
Is it, I'm trying to, I haven't walked out there in a really long time. Is that, are you going to leave the grade there? Cause I, if I remember right, that, that can get a little steep up there, can it?
So, yeah, this is all going to get raised. So this is fairly flat in here, but there will be some grade kind of along this side. Um, and there will be some grade along this side. We're flattens out is right here.
Yeah.
Um, you can kind of see we're filling all of this in. All through here and then actually filling around here to create this pond, then filling a little bit in back here. So the existing grade is going to be dropping off in this area still, um, uh, right in this area. So this will, this will still be. But for the most part, if you want your large dog and you're walking back here, it's pretty, it'll be pretty flat here and then the dog can run and do its thing. Um, or you can, you know, walk after it, I guess, too. Um, kind of depending on how, how you want to work, you know, work your exercise in with the dog's exercise, I guess.
Makes sense. Thanks.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments regarding this development? Otherwise, this again is a discuss and consider.
I, I can move to approve. I just can't find my, finding my language here. Um.
Don't jump out of the chair here, so.
All right.
It'll make it easier.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll, I have moved to improve, uh, uh, move approval of the proposed precise implementation plan from Continental Properties. For a two eighty-eight unit multi-family residential development located on those parcels as listed on the agenda.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. Thanks, David. Um, any further discussion?
With conditions?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thanks. With all of the conditions listed.
All right, David, you good with that? That would be from staff.
We're good.
Okay. Uh, okay. We got a motion approved, uh, for this development. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion carries. Thanks, Eric, uh, for coming out.
Thank you all. We appreciate being a part of the community here.
Yes. Uh, then moving on to, uh, the next item then, uh, that plan commission covered was to discuss and consider. A site plan approval for Avid for an approximately nineteen thousand six hundred square foot office, a light industrial facility. Located in Lot One of CSM one five one nine seven in the Commerce Park on the southeast corner of Commerce Parkway and Landmark Drive. Um, this was actually a development agreement that we approved earlier. This is actually their site plan. So, um, let's see. Yes. If a representative's on, time for them.
I saw them here earlier.
Yeah, I'm not. So again, uh, plant commission, uh, recommended the board approve this. The concept, I'll try to cover it as much as I can and then let.
John, I have a suggestion. Um, I can work behind the scenes here to email them or get in touch and see if they can jump back on the call.
Okay.
In the meantime, maybe just, uh, we can just continue with the agenda.
Thanks, Matt. Good idea. All right. Um, it's a nice looking building, by the way. Um. So then moving on to item D is to, and to discuss and consider request for approval for a site approval plan from, uh, Atlantis Valley Foods. For approximately a forty-five thousand six hundred square foot light industrial facility on lot number three on CSM one one two two six three. In the Commerce Park, immediately east of Skill, uh, on Commerce Parkway. So, I. Is Mr. Swanson still on? I don't see him either.
Well, I'll do the same for, for them. I, we had so many development agreements that I confused everybody, I think. Um, other, other action items, but, uh, we'll work on it.
Okay. Um, otherwise I'll do my best interpretation and let Aaron fill in the gaps, uh, if we get to that point. So we'll move on then, uh, to, um. Actually, a ordinance discussion that plan had, and this was discuss and consider ordinance zero five two zero one, two, one. Regarding pools and related safety, um, measures. And, uh, ordinance worked on this, particularly actually Heidi did a lot of legwork. Um, the plan commission did not recommend changing the current, um, ordinance. Uh, there was a good discussion about the automated covers versus fences. Uh, and, and the majority of the plan commission felt not to change that, at least at this point. But again, it's up to this board to consider that. Uh, but that was the plan commission's recommendation. Uh, Melissa, anything, did I misrepresent that in any way or?
Hope that was accurate. It was a, a good conversation about the possible changes. Um, and ultimately, I think there's still too many what ifs, um. With just having a cover and not a fence at this point. And so that's. Why ultimately I think the plant commission chose to deny making the changes at this time.
Well said. Um, board can discuss this particular item though. Um. Any thoughts on this?
But the ordinance committee suggested that it be approved?
The ordinance, um, no, I think the ordinance committee just recommended the proposed changes. And then we had to have a, and I think in this case, we had a, uh, public hearing, uh, at plan commission because that's required. Uh, for this particular change. Um, no one from the public weighed in. And again, uh, we, we had a discussion about data around this and other communities. And again, uh, ordinance did its, it's a bit of digging and it's, it's a, it's a mix. Um, but as Melissa said, I think it summed up as, didn't think it was compelling at this point to make the change because we didn't feel like. There's enough, um. Information about the auto, um, closing pools, covers.
Uh, I'll just chime in from discussions at ordinance committee. The motion that ordinance committee made was to just move it in the process at the direction of the village board. So that was kind of the direction we got. I didn't. I don't get the sense that anyone wanted to recommend approval of the ordinance. It was just to move it forward in the process.
Thanks, Heidi.
If I can, if I can.
Go ahead.
If I can ask one quick question, you know, whether we change it or not, the village takes on no liability, correct? If, if a homeowner chooses to put a pool in their backyard, they don't have a fence, they have one of these safety contraptions. Uh, the village is in no way, shape or form liable if anything happens.
That's correct.
I, I, I guess I, I'm trying to wrap my arms around why we would try to keep a homeowner from doing what they want to do at their property. And, uh, you know, play big brother here. Uh, if they choose to do that and something happens, uh, that's, that's on them. They need to sleep at night. If something happens and someone's grounds, um, I, I, I can't worry about that. It's not fifty cents worth, three cent.
I just add on to that is, uh, getting a pool is, uh, a choice as well. And so with the putting in a pool, the responsibility is then to put in a fence, you know, no one's twisting anybody's arm and forcing them to put in a pool.
Other discussion on this item?
Was there any opinion from like our police or EMS or fire or anything? Or is it just based on our, our own assessment of what we think is considered safe?
Uh, there was no discussion from police or, or that, at least a plan, because it was just more of a, the commission discussing this. Certainly at this level, we can, we can, you know, if we have chief, one of the chiefs on or, or all of them, we can have that. Them weigh in on this, but, um, again, it was, it was more that I didn't see it was compelling to, to make a change at this point. Was from the commission's perspective as, as Melissa alluded to and I did as well.
So, so how are you looking at, at the memo? I, I guess what exactly are we looking to change? Are we trying to take away the, the, um. Fence requirements as long as they have one of these, um, power safety covers? Is that, is that really what it boils down to?
Yeah, you'd have to either have a fence that meets the requirements or a power safety cover. And a subsurface disturbance monitor, which is a relatively inexpensive additional layer of protection. That would, um, sound an alarm if, um, something around eighteen pounds or greater disturbed the water. Um, so you could choose either of those safety measures and the automatic pool cover, uh, switch would have to be protected by a key code. And placed at a certain height so small children couldn't access the keypad. Um, similar to the height requirement of the latch, um, on a fence. So you, you choose one of those two and because it's not, uh, just a fence requirement anymore. It would move to a new section of the chapter because you address things other than just fences and then.
Thank you. I, I, I see no reason why we wouldn't want to make the change, so I'll make that motion.
Actually, I did want to make one really quick point, Trevor, before you did that. I mean, as a parent of a special needs child, I worry not necessarily about my own pool. I don't have a pool, but if I did, you know, obviously I'd have to follow the ordinance. But with a child who is known to elope or is threatened many, many times in the years he's been alive. Um, the fences do keep my child out of other, out of other pools. Obviously, as the parent, it's up to me to keep, keep him out of pool, right? Out of a neighbor's pool, but, um, I think something to consider here is even though that the background rationale is to keep your children who live on the same property as the pool. Um, if, I think we should also consider other children in the neighborhood, right? Who, who may which, who may wander into a pool. Um, so just food for thought, I'd throw it out there.
And it sounds like these other options would, as long as somebody covered the pool. Right, just like as long as somebody closes the fence door, it would keep those kids safe. That's how I was understanding it.
And even now, I will, go ahead, Melissa.
Sorry, the fence has like an automatic close, a self-closing latch. The pool cover does not, so a person has to push. The pool cover does not. So a person has to push the button to have the pool cover close. And so my concern with it is how responsible that pool owner is. The fence is like, it, it makes it easy where you don't have to think about it. There's a fence there. So if the pool doesn't have a cover on, you don't have to worry about people coming in as easily to drown in the pool with a, with having the button. The pool owner has to press it. How likely are they to press the button to close the pool if they have to take their child inside to use the bathroom? So they're only going to be gone for a few minutes. That was, that, that's my main concern with this.
So, so we don't have a requirement, we don't have a requirement presently to have someone that has a pool with a fence that says that the gate needs to be closed all the time. So I'm, I'm trying to understand the difference. If we can't tell someone with a pool that you need to have the gate closed at all times when, when no one's around, if you take your child into, to the bathroom, then why are we being big brother here? And, and, you know, we have to assume that adults are responsible, in my opinion. And I just, you know, I, I struggle with regulations that keep a homeowner from being a homeowner and doing what they want on, on their property. So if, if we choose not to do this, then I think we should really look at the ordinance with fences and make sure that they require them to have the fence access closed at all times.
Detroit, the, the ordinance actually says that when not in use, the gate must stay closed. And gate shall be equipped with self-closing hinges and a latch that is intended to discourage unauthorized entry by small children. So I would say like, to your point, you do have to keep the gate closed at all times.
So u- using, using Melissa's example, and someone, you know, has the gate propped open. They go into, they go to the bathroom. What keeps another child or an adult from going into that area?
It's not supposed to be propped open though.
So is, and, and, and so what's the difference in the gate not being propped open and the pool not being covered? I'm trying to understand the relationship there. Either way, it's still the owner's responsibility to make sure that their pool is, is safe for the general public.
I, I also think that a fence, you know, is easily openable. Like kids aged three to four and up, they know how to open those fences. So I don't, I, I feel like we're splitting hairs here and, and, and I don't know that we're keeping any one person more safer or not if we go with the fence or this pool cover. I, I, I think I'm kind of siding with, thinking along the lines of Troy here in that I don't know that we can say that one is better than the other, because I could find ways to get into the pool through both.
Other thoughts on this?
There are a number of pools that are next to our community parks. Thinking about little kids playing next to, you know, a swimming pool potentially opened and unattended next to a park. Just thinking about that situation, if that would change any of your thoughts on this? You know, just bringing that up as a, you know, point to consider.
Just for clarity, Heidi, does this only include, or include in-ground pools? So someone that has a pool that's in the backyard that's smaller, that you need to climb up a ladder, is there a requirement they have a fence around that?
So the above-ground pools section is remaining the same in the proposed change as it was previously. And it's defining the safety barriers shall be required with any pool or spa measuring at least eighteen inches in depth and fifteen feet in width that is intended for swimming. So it's a pretty large pool that it would be required for. You know, it's not like your little inflatable thing that you put in the backyard, but.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I'm thinking just driving around the neighborhood and, and you can buy a kit at Wally World, Target, whatever. And you can get a pretty good sized pool for pretty inexpensively that's above ground, but nobody has a fence around them. And they've got a ladder going directly from the ground into the pool. And again, what keeps a three-year-old from wandering by and just popping in the pool? So I, I, again, I'll, I will make a motion to make the changes as discussed in the memo from Heidi from the ordinance review committee.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
All right, motion second. Any further discussion? Having heard none then, all in favor?
Aye.
Those that oppose?
Aye.
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 Those that abstain? Motion does not carry, so.
Lisa, do you need a roll call for, for the minutes?
That would be great.
All right. All right, let's try that again. So we have a motion second and we'll do a roll call vote.
Alan?
Aye.
Murphy?
No.
Peterson?
Nay.
Ratcliffe?
No.
Valencia?
Aye.
Vander Veldy and Williams?
No.
So it's four no, two aye.
All right. Do we have? Matt, were you successful?
Yes, Brock Ryan from Avid is, is on the call and, and also Michael Swanson with Atlantis Valley Foods. So we can, we can go back to those Plan Commission items.
Okay, so we'll shift back up then to item C, and that is discuss and consider request for a site approval plan for Avid for an approximately nineteen thousand six hundred square foot light industrial facility on the corner, southeast corner of Commerce Parkway and Landmark Drive.
Are you expecting me to say something now? This is Brock.
Ah, yes, I'm sorry, Brock. Yeah, I think, I don't know if you walked through it on, during Plan Commission. Representative did walk through kind of the plan of, of the develop, the, the site at Plan Commission. And that's kind of what we generally do in these situations so that the entire board gets to hear what you've got in store for that particular lot.
Yeah, I apologize. I was listening to it at the beginning of it for early on and then I actually jumped off, so I didn't know where to come back on. So I apologize for not staying on. Yeah, so, so in that location, we're building a flex space, industrial office space for that location where we will have our location of a few different businesses that we occupy. We're going to have an apparel company. Then we have wholesale distributor company. That's all going to be mixed into that location. And then we'll be renting out some of that space, about seven, seventy-eight hundred square feet there, which would be on the first, further south of the building. We'll be occupying it. The building will be, you know, thirty-some thousand square feet. They're just finalizing all the all the overviews as far as what the lot will afford with the sloping and everything, with the egress and everything that will be there. So that space, you know, is something that, you know, we're really excited about with the new area of, you know, what to bring. We're going to have a light retail store in there. It'll be about eleven to twelve hundred square feet for our different apparel brands and things that we have for there. So that will be, you know, it's not going to be a very heavily trafficked, but it's where we bring different clients, whether it's the corporate space or team space that they would come in and see the different items that we have on display. Will be in that showroom. So it's kind of, we say store lightly, but it'll be a showroom store that will be used for that space there. That's going to be on the main area that will be prevalent right there at the corner on the northwest corner of the lot. So that's what, that's where that'll be. And Eric said, I think we put a lot of time into it. Supreme Structure did a good job designing, you know, a really nice looking building. I think you guys have version one. I know there's been some changes, Matt, to that and some of those things, John. So I don't know, you know, which one you guys have. I know there's been a few slight iteration changes, but that's kind of the overview. If there's any questions, be more than happy. But yeah, there it is there. So be more than happy to answer questions of anybody who would have for it.
I just think, again, Plan Commission recommended approval for this. Walk through kind of down to the materials, some natural stone, aluminum that's, looks like wood, that adds kind of a pop, that will be very durable. They're still working on the logo here, but they're looking to have something there. And again, Plan Commission didn't have any, any concerns about that. It, it's going to really look nice in that corner. I think everybody thought from that, from the Plan Commission side. And any comments you want to add from your perspective? And then we'll move to Kevin and then over to the board.
We'd recommend approval. It's, like you said, it's a nice looking building. It really fits the corner there. Just a few conditions in the planning report. The first one, sign permits are separate process. Second one, just noting that if mechanical units end up being placed on the roof, they have to be screened. We would still like to see the photometric diagram and lighting cut sheets just for staff approval. And for phase two, we would like them to come back for approval before they construct that, just to make sure we have all the details we need to review that.
Fair enough.
All right, and Kevin?
Yep, thanks, John. We also recommended approval. We've just got a few comments on there that we touched base with. And one of them was that there's an existing sanitary stub that was put in on Landmark originally for the site. So instead of them cutting into Commerce Parkway to create a new service, if they can try to utilize that one that's near the water service stub that they put in there. And I did provide the engineer with the records of those as well. So he was going to be looking into that as well. They need to, they'll have to show the roof drains once they get to that point. And then basically the last comment is pretty much stormwater related. They basically just need to, they'll have to do an onsite stormwater system. Basically, right now, it's just kind of shown grading off into the neighbors. We want to make sure it's not just draining directly to the east to the neighbors or out to the, out to the roads. They have to have an internal stormwater system. And with that, they are required to do some infiltration testing. This lot was not fully exempted by DNR for infiltration. It could be, but they recommended some additional test pits. So they were working on securing those. And depending on what those are, it's possible the site could be exempt. If not, they did have room and showed an infiltration basin on the site. So, you know, they'll just have to site that accordingly based on the soils that they find and everything there as well. And then if that is necessary, then we'll have to have a, a long-term maintenance agreement. If the stormwater's not needed as far as the infiltration, then it, we probably won't need one of those as well. But, so some of that's still pending, but that was it.
All right, thanks, Ian. Thanks, Kevin. Board members, any questions or comments? Otherwise, this is discuss and consider.
I'll make the motion to approve the site plan from Avid for approximately nineteen thousand six hundred square foot office light industrial facility on lot one of CSM one-five-one-nine-seven in the Commerce Park. Southeast corner of Commerce Parkway and Landmark Drive with staff conditions.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Thanks, Melissa. Thanks, Sarah. Then any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
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 Anybody oppose? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Brock, for jumping back on with us.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you too. All right. We'll move on then to discuss and consider request for approval for a site plan for Atlantis Valley Foods for an approximately forty-five thousand six hundred square foot light industrial facility on lot number three. CSM one-one-two-six-three in the Commerce Park immediately east of Skill on Commerce Parkway. So I see Michael. Are you taken away, Michael? I can't hear you. We can see, I see your screen, but we don't hear any volume yet.
Is anyone a good troubleshooter with Zoom? I can, Michael, we can see that you're not muted, but for some reason, I, I don't know if it's your, it could be your computer's audio could be muted.
Click on the little arrow next to the microphone. You can make sure that you have the right microphone selected. On the mute button, it's a little arrow, and then you click on it and select the microphone. We're still not hearing you, Michael.
Yep. Otherwise, you can send him the call-in number too, Matt. An ID. So I can just use his phone.
I mean, I, I think it's a, we can, we can probably get, get by. Aaron, do you feel comfortable introducing the, the project? I think people are pretty familiar with what they're looking to do.
The site plan that I can pull up here?
Thanks. Looks like he's hopping back on. Oh, he's, this might work.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Thanks for keeping up.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
All right, let me try this again. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so this is kind of the overall site plan for the building that we are proposing for three oh three Commerce Parkway. Just kind of for everyone's awareness of where the site is. This is the cul-de-sac at the end. Directly to the pass this cul-de-sac is the runway at Black Hawk Airport. Oakstone is across the street here and our current building is up here kind of to the upper right corner of this, of the screen. So what we're proposing is approximately forty-five thousand square foot building. It's a combination of commercial kitchen, office space, warehouse, and then garage for our delivery vehicles. So it's a little bit more than twice the size of our current facility there. It's got a loading dock face the west and then another kind of smaller loading area down here to the, to the east. As far as drainage goes, I apologize, I don't have all of Alan's drainage pictures. But the, the whole lot slopes basically to the south. And the plan includes roof drainage down into this infiltration basin here. Additionally, I know one of the other concerns for the, for the plan was to make sure that we don't have any drainage going up into to steels up here. So we did include, or we are intending to put in a swale and a curb along the was that the west side of this in order to make sure that the runoff from that parking lot goes down here into the infiltration basin down here for, for our building. As far as what the exterior design and elevations look like, we're proposing a textured steel panel along the, kind of the visible sides of the office and kitchen side of the building. So this top elevation here is the north elevation. So looking So this top elevation here is the north elevation, so looking directly at the building from Commerce Parkway. Uh, south elevation is from the side um where you can't really see anything basically where that basin is. The west elevation is what you're gonna see as you come down Commerce Parkway. This here, uh, this door in the middle here is kind of the main entrance to the building. Colors are, you know, an indication of our company colors. We use blue and uh blue and green as our company colors there as well. And then uh down here, the east elevation is pretty much only visible from the airport side of the building. Uh, again, with some of that color on it as well. Otherwise, the rest of the building um is mostly overhead doors, loading dock. Uh, and we're proposing keeping the same gray color from the textured uh textured steel onto the um. On the rest of the building there. Interior floor plan, most of uh, most of the southern part of the building is um truck garage and storage for the vehicles. Um, we typically try to keep them inside as much as possible. The rest of it is uh mixture of office and kitchen like we talked about. I know one of the other things for the uh, one of the other considerations is the the roof unit, so. Where we have it designed, uh, all of the HVAC units are overhead, the office and the kitchen to keep them over where they're gonna be used mostly, primarily. Um, and though he does have this designed with um. Basically screening that is the same texture, same finish as the rest of the building. Um, for uh to keep that this uh to keep that consistent as well as to make sure that none of those. Um, overhead units are visible from the street, so. Um, we'll make sure that that's high enough in order to make sure that those aren't, you can't see those from the street, none of the mechanical stuff on the roof. Um, unfortunately, I don't have the plan for what the um landscaping is going to look like. Um, because I didn't, I don't have that package personally. Um, the way we're proposing the landscaping is with extra landscaping to make up for that. Um, for that textured metal, um textured metal panels on the front and sides of the building there, so. Um, just, you know, the the metal panels are are an exception that is allowed to be approved. With the caveat that we're gonna put extra landscaping in and that that's that is our intent, so. It's very heavy landscaping, basically along Commerce Parkway. Um, as well as on these kind of grassy areas here to as well kind of shield that as you're coming down Commerce Parkway. Um, just one other thing I was gonna note, it's, you know, it's as far back in the in the park as you can get. It's the end of Commerce Parkway, so. Um, it's not particularly visible. Um, that's also potentially mitigating factor, but we, you know, we intend to. Um, and I think we've done this in our current building to keep that landscaping up as best we can, keep it looking nice and make sure that it's. It's fulfilling its intended purpose. Um, I know one other question that came from the Architecture Review Committee was this second dumpster area down here. Uh, they had asked to put some more landscaping screening around that, and we fully intend to do that and have no problem with that contingency. Um. So that's pretty much the primary stuff that I have, unless there's something that I missed, Aaron or Matt, or you want me to cover more.
Good summary, Michael. Thank you.
Alright, any um questions, comments regarding the last foods development plan here? Or site plan?
Just to make sure I understand, so we're, that the proposal is to do uh some sort of a textured metal siding rather than. Uh, any sort of stone or brickwork? Is is that correct?
That is correct. The the mitigation of doing uh over the minimum required landscaping to make up for the fact that we're doing. A lower quality finish than stone, which is what we've done. It's also consistent with what we did on our current building.
I I guess, I I I guess from my perspective, it'd be really nice to see that before we had approved it. Uh, I have no idea what. Extra landscape means, uh frankly.
Michael, if you wanna stop sharing, I can bring up that plan.
No problem, thanks.
Just need to find it here, but um. Well, I'm looking, that is a caveat that's kind of built into our zoning ordinance that. At the discretion of the Plan Commission and Board, we can um make that exception.
I appreciate it, Aaron. It's just a visual helps me rather than just a a discussion, so. I have a lot of personal issues, obviously.
Um. For some reason, the whole thing is not popping up here. I don't know if it's because I'm. The file's too big and it's going through too many different places here. It is in the packet, though. It's number forty-seven in the link of attached materials there.
And just as an aside, the Architecture Review Committee didn't have an issue with. Uh, the proposed siding versus in combination with the. The extra plantings and uh that plan, so. Uh, that committee was okay with that, with that. Isn't isn't aside, as well as Plan Commission was too.
Aaron, I can try to share my screen. I I can pull, I pulled up what I had in the plan here.
Um, yeah, I might have it too. I'm trying it from a different spot here. Nope, nope, good. Yep, that's it. So, um, basically, they had about twice the amount of landscaping points they're required to have. And as you can see, it's mostly focused on that front facade and right in front of the building there.
So kind of similar to what their existing building is, um. Because they've done a similar thing there as well as extra plantings.
You know, the materials are the same. I think the landscaping might even be more robust on this site than on the other one.
Yeah, I think it's potentially a little bit more, but I mean, it's, you know, we also. Or we're committed to keeping it up and making it look nice too. And and hopefully, that's that's what we've seen from our current building.
We we are. Thank you, Michael. And and the other consideration during uh Architectural Review was the consideration that. Um. From, from the the president at least, that the Architectural Review took when they, when they've looked at each one of. The projects that have come to Commerce Park is that they aim to have the the highest, best materials. In the most visible spots of the park and being that um both of the Atlantis Valley um. Projects are further back in the park, that they were more comfortable relaxing that a little bit. Um, provided there were these, you know, additional landscaping and and um architectural type. Steel instead of, you know, regular steel or metal.
And there's nothing like it's but it's butted up to the airport on one side. And is steel in front of it?
To the west, yeah.
And then is anything able to be built behind it at some future date?
It's a large stormwater pond. Have a regional pond for the park behind behind them.
And if, one other question, if they, I see there's area for them to expand on this lot. If they were to do that in the future, does that impact the landscaping requirement?
Not really, because that may seem to me would only be required on the front street facade anyway.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I I have two questions. I, and maybe it's just me that knowing how to read the plans, but. Do I, so, Ian, you're you're sharing your screen, right?
Kevin is actually.
Where's Kevin? Kevin, there's the, if you could scroll down. Um, keep going. What, yeah, what is that in the lower left-hand corner there? Is it like a a dock right there, kind of the? Half moon shape? If you move your cursor to the left, Kevin, and then up. Yeah, what is that?
Those are trash receptacles.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Um. I was just trying to make sense of that. I guess, Michael, my big question is, if you can scroll up now, Kevin. Um, for that future billing area, see where that, is that, are are those more dumpsters there, kind of?
Yes, there are, that's.
Okay. I couldn't tell if that was a loading dock or not. Is it, are you going to, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, sir, actually, I can, I can explain that. Can I take the screen sharing back? I, thank you.
Yep. Hey, Michael, I I I do have a question at some point, but I was just kind of trying to make sense of some of the drawings here.
Go ahead. I mean, I can, I can try and explain this.
Yeah, I I guess, is it, are you going to, is it gonna be paved a full three sixty degrees around the building?
Yes.
Is it, okay. I guess, is it? Just help me understand kind of like with that that future addition back there, kind of what the plans are back there, because I'm just trying to think. Really from a landscaping perspective, but just from a, just kind of an operations and a driving perspective, I mean, like, you know. Two sides of the building, right? Trucks have to back up. And I'm not trying to critique that. I'm just trying to understand kind of the the long-range plans here.
So there's two considerations, I guess, for driving. So there's our delivery trucks, and then there's our suppliers semi trucks that deliver product to us. So for our delivery trucks, which are smaller, they're transit styles, or you know, like a Sprinter style van. Those mostly, as much as we can, we don't have space for all right now, but those get parked inside. So the traffic flow for that is, as they come back at the end of the day, come down here, drive, and then they pull into. Drive-through garages here basically and park inside.
Okay.
And then they load their trucks up either at night or in the morning, and then in the morning when they leave, which is. No late, typically no later than seven AM is what we try and get them out of the, out of the office. They just basically pull straight out here, pull out, and then go out to wherever they're going. We do, um, so we don't deal in semis really. We have a a pretty large move truck, but we don't have any semis, but obviously our suppliers do. So that's this dock here in the middle, and the way they have this plan, and you can kind of see it a little bit on the 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 radii here. Those, those would also come all the way down here, drive all the way all around, and then pull basically up here and then back into the dock. Um, for, you know, delivering products, equipment, that kind of thing. And then when they are getting ready to leave, they would also go pull straight out and then out into the street from there. So that's, that's the traffic flow. Um, this is an increase in the number of docks that we have. Um, this is two docks instead of one, and that's. As right now, we are, we have plenty of suppliers waiting on the, because we try and drive our suppliers as early in the morning. So those there, we routinely have a truck waiting for us, waiting on the street to deliver to us, so that we can um. Get them out of the way, get all the product in as early in the morning as we can. That's kind of driven by the way our schedule for how we kind of operate the businesses, so that, so that's what. That's what the traffic flow is. Hopefully, that answers your questions. Is there anything else?
That was perfect. I I, for some reason, didn't didn't see the arrow at the very bottom of the, this.
Be its own, you know, planning and approval process. Um, the the bottom portion, and I'll go back to this. So this portion of the plan is our, is the the commercial kitchen port part of the the business, which is. About twice, a little bit more than twice the size of what we have right now. Um, the potential future expansion is basically another block about the same size. Grafted on to kind of the the back part of this building here in what will be just a grass lawn to begin with. Um, you know, a- and that's kind of what that is. The other, the uh, the other ex- potential future expansion over here. Is more garage space, uh, which we don't need yet. Um, and we're not, you know, we're not intending to do that soon or anything, but. This garage has some somewhere close to thirty-six parking spots in it, thirty-seven parking spots. And we have, um, currently, we have uh nineteen routes and um. About twenty-four trucks or something like that, so even as the way it's planned, we have plenty of space in the current building to. Take on more capacity as we continue to grow.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there comments, questions uh from board members?
We're um adjacent to the airport then. Are there, it meets any restrictions? Um, that might be in place because of that airport?
Yep, the uh, the height of the building and the height of those screens is specifically planned to be below the the navigation. Um, requirement to meet that runway uh for, it's kind of the rise overrun requirement for that, so, yeah. He's, we have that, there is a document, I think, in the, in the package that we submitted, but um it's under that requirement.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or again, this is a discuss and consider?
Hey, John, did you want me to run through any of like the comments that we just had, just uh? Just to go through our site comments quick?
Uh, sure, sorry, Kevin, yes.
No, that's fine. I I don't have very many, and not to belabor them, but uh. The ones that are included, we recommended approval of this as well. Um, we just uh had some uh. Comments on basically the door locations, um, just between different plans at the time when the, when it was submitted at the time. Didn't look like there was any elevation concerns, but just basically clarifying some of those. We recommended extending the roadway curb on the south side. Um, the the concrete curb and gutter, basically extending that through the drive entrance. Right now, it it stops before that and water kind of pools there, and I talked with their engineer about that. Um, and then they can provide a um ADA access with the sidewalk basically to that uh curb entrance. Um. Just a note mainly that just so everybody knows that the westerly driveway next to Steel, there, that is over top of a sanitary sewer easement that the village has. Um, that goes through there. This is uncommon. It's more basically just noted that the village will still be using that as needed or anything for any kind of maintenance. Or anything, um, you know, for the times that they need to to clean or do anything, uh, any kind of maintenance over their sewer that runs through there. Um, some minor comments as far as some of the stormwater, um. Basically for future maintenance, um, for the storm outfalls, um, using the scour stop instead of the riprap. Just to help village staff with uh maintenance. Um, the storms who were piping grades just weren't included at the time uh when they did their. First, so we'll just verify that on the final plans. Um, there was a couple utility connection things we just noted. Uh, the, um, easy to work with them on. Um. There was a detailed sheet that I don't think was included, but was referenced on there. And then the stormwater, um, I believe at Plan Commission, it was noted they were. They did some soil borings for the building, and they were basically kind of waiting until approval. And then they were gonna be doing some test pits back where the infiltration was to basically verify. Uh, any soils and then any infiltration that they would uh be required to do as well. So they've got an area for it. They're gonna be finding out whether what kind of infiltration is needed or anything through there, so. Um, it's being addressed, that's just in progress as well. Otherwise, um, you know, with the business parks, it's it's pretty much got all onsite. Stormwater management, and then depending on what infiltration is needed, they'll just need a, the same maintenance agreement as we have with all the rest of them. So, those are our comments.
Alright, thanks, Kevin. Um. Any other discussion items, or again, this is discuss and consider?
John, if I could just note, I think we kind of covered the conditions that were in my report through the conversation, but there were a couple. That the ARC had added that are in the Village Action Report. Um, they had actually requested curb and gutter on both driveways.
Yep.
And um, they wanted to make sure the trash enclosures were the same material as the front facade of the building and that they were. Also screened with landscaping, particularly the one on the east side there, that's closer to the street.
And we, we're good with, we have, we have all that stuff and we'll take care of all that stuff.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, thank you, Aaron. Um, any other comments from board members or questions?
I'd make a motion to approve the site plan from Atlantis Valley Foods. For an approximately forty-five thousand six hundred square foot light industrial facility on lot three. Flip my page here, CSM one one two six three in the Commerce Park immediately east of Steel and Commerce Parkway with staff conditions.
Second.
And uh, as Aaron said, with the Arc Review comments as well?
Yes, that's in Aaron's memo. Those are listed out, is that right? Yep, include those.
Okay, I didn't know, yeah. You highlighted, I just wanted to make sure we covered them.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Heidi. Thank you, Troy. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Thanks again, Michael, for jumping back on.
Of course, thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it, and thank you for all your consideration tonight.
All right. All right, we will, um, move on then. I, let's see. The only else on Plan Commission that was covered, uh, was just an update on the City of Madison Boundary Agreement. Aaron Matt just updated that, uh, you know, kind of looking for consideration there to move ahead with just Madison at this point. Um, making sure we get that approved. Is that correct, Aaron and Matt?
Yes, uh, we're gonna have, um, invite City of Madison staff to come in open session and, and, uh, provide their comments and viewpoints to the Plan Commission, and a chance for the Plan Commission to ask some questions to the, to the city staff, and then we'll likely have a, a closed session for, for Plan Commission consideration of that as far as a negotiating position, um, later in the meeting. So we, we should have more for the board, and if it's a productive conversation, we might, we might do a, a, a board closed session to discuss and get the board's position as well. So that's what we're working on for now.
All right. Thanks, Matt. I think that was the only other thing I, I had on Plan Commission. Then we'll move on to Emergency Preparedness Committee. Um, tenant got pulled away from, from us, so JJ was kind enough to, uh, jump in. I'll start JJ, and then I'll let you, uh, continue on. How's that? So, um, we just covered the, uh, the minutes from prior meeting, um, just, uh, Lieutenant Wagner is going to be checking with all the members, uh, as far as completing their ICS training. There was a period of time where some wasn't available due to the pandemic, now it's, it's available, uh, and, uh, members are, are working their way through that. Just an update on the preparation for the emergency prepared kits. Uh, figured out three location, uh, well, four, I think it was, at the uh, fire station and then, uh, village, village hall. Right?
Um, municipal services.
Municipal, sorry. Uh, so you should just keep going, JJ.
I suppose I could try and give you a break, John. Um, really, not too much more, like you said, Lieutenant had an emergency that evening, so, uh, he was working on getting maps of village facilities, and he had all of the maps of the, from the school district. And, let's see. Oh, we, uh, got a two thousand dollar donation from Hydrate, and a brief discussion on how we could spend that money on a, uh, an exercise. And, that is all I had, unless I'm missing something.
I think the only other thing is we threw out the non-traditional, uh, potential exercise of, you know, cyber, some sort of cyber attack to consider. So, in that mix, we think about storms and other things, but the committee also covered that as well, based on the whole recent activity with the pipeline shutdown, done. So. With that, any questions?
Just curious, have we split up the assets that were in the joint committee between the town and the village? Had we kind of cleared that up, or is that still in limbo as to what, you know, they had some computers, they had some cell phones, uh, all that stuff? Uh, where, where are we at with that?
I can answer that one, Troy. Um, we're, we're not splitting up the assets when it comes to the actual um, EOC, because we're still gonna be able to utilize that facility and utilize those assets. Uh, when it came to the actual financial part of it, uh, that was split up. The money that was due to the village, uh, debt has already been received. Thank you.
All right. Then we'll move on to ADHARC Architectural Review Committee, and we held that, finally, shoot. On May fourteenth, um, Erin already alluded to one of the items that was covered for Atlantis, uh, just some additional screening and some, make sure that some of those, um, uh, dumpsters were all covered in the same material. But again, recommended approval from the ARC Review Committee, and then we also walked through the avid property, the one, um, on the southeast corner of Commerce Parkway and Landmark with that nineteen thousand six hundred square foot, uh, light industrial office, uh, building. And again, recommended, um, approval and made comments on that as well. Um, so that was ARC Review. Uh, then moving on, if there's no questions, to reports from village officers, the first one up is just to discuss and consider the nomination for David Peterson to Joint Fire, uh, NABIG Landfill Monitoring Committee, Peer Court Steering Committee, and, um, Community Development Authority Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve David Peterson's nomination to the Joint Fire Department Committee, NABIG Landfill Monitoring Review Committee, Peer Court Steering Committee, and Community Development Committee.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, thanks, Melissa, thanks, Heidi. Uh, any further discussion?
Do I?
I've had a question that's not related to, to David's nomination, but, uh, do, do all of our other committees then just stand as, as as have been assigned?
Uh, yes, with the exception, um, I know you have a work conflict with, uh, CDA, when I was just gonna cover that, that we do have a an opening on CDA for a board member. Um, but I was gonna cover that after we got, took care of that.
Got it, sorry.
Yep, but yes, you were the only one that had, had some pop-up, which, which is fine. It, that always happens. Um, so, we have a motion second for the, the approval committees for David.
Do I?
And then David has a question.
Yeah, John, do I, do I vote or abstain in this one? I don't remember.
Uh, I think you can vote, technically.
Lisa's nodding her head and everyone's nodding, okay, fine, thank you.
Unless you don't want to, but then you.
I just, I don't know the rules.
I recorded our conversation, by the way, so you did say yes, so, kidding. All right, uh, again, uh, motion second, any further discussion? Having heard none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. And as Sarah mentioned, yes, there is a, a spot on CDA uh, for a board member, so please, if you're interested, uh, reach out to me and let me know. Um, a lot of, lots going on with that committee right now, with the rebranding and everything, pretty exciting, so, um, just again, just drop me a note.
I would offer, if you want, if somebody wants to switch, if you don't want to just take on an additional committee, I don't know, I guess I would offer that out. It's the, the second Monday, I have, uh, already have another meeting scheduled for work, so that's my only conflict.
All right, so yes, if there's trade-in that goes on, then let me know that, too. Uh, all right, um, moving on then to separate, uh, legal updates. Larry, have you talked enough tonight?
I think we've gone long enough, I'm not gonna waste any time. I just, I have to underscore, um, that everyone should be proud of, uh, you know, this role as board, as, you know, the, the, the body providing and creating the, the environment in which all of this development is occurring. It, it's really an exciting time, and, uh, a lot of good things happening in the village, so good work to everyone.
Thanks for that, Larry. And thanks for running like a crazy person lately, uh, as well as staff, other staff, too, Matt and Aaron as well, um, and Rick. With that, then, uh, we do have a COVID-nineteen update. Uh, this is a discuss and consider uh, to return to in-person meeting. Again, this is subject to the CD, recent CDC guidance, and, uh, any, any changes in Dane County's public health, uh, orders and guidelines.
I'll, I'll kind of kick it off, John. I, I, I should, I should say, just to be clear, um, this wasn't put on because I'm, I'm suggesting, or any staff is suggesting, that that's exactly whatever, what, what the board, um, jumps to or, or does. It was just because of the, the CDC's most recent guidelines really opening things up for, for people that are fully vaccinated to be able to meet, uh, be together unmasked, even indoors. And with the timing of when that occurred with, with this meeting, and then our next meeting, you know, not being for a few weeks, ju- just wanted to make sure we had a, a discussion and, um, a chance to, to talk it through and see what everyone's thoughts are. Uh, we're, we're still working behind the scenes, and we'll continue to work to have the technology in place to do hybrid meetings. Um, there's a bit of a a, a crunch to do that with all the communities in Dane County and around us, and so the providers that provide that, that, that technology, there could be a delay in, you know, maybe getting the equipment or doing the install, so, um, if there is a desire to move back to in-person, we, we likely would not have a viable hybrid approach for a short time period, you know, maybe a month, two months or so. Um, so that's something to factor in as well. But with that, I guess, ki- kind of just an open discussion, see what, what people's thoughts are, but there's certainly no rush, especially if there's, uh, people that aren't fully vaccinated yet and, and wanna, wanna hold off, and, um, and, and just to explain a little bit more on the hybrid meetings, the, the, without the proper technology, we, we technically could do a hybrid meeting, but the production quality and, uh, um, it, it would be much worse than this virtual option we're doing right now. So what that would mean is we would basically be plugging one computer into our TV screen in the boardroom right now, without the proper technology, and we would be turning the webcam towards everyone that's in person, and that's all anyone from the Zoom call would see. Um, so it would be difficult to hear and see what's going on, and, um, it would look even worse being broadcast. You know, so, so the, the recording of that back out either on YouTube or on our cable channel would not be of good quality, so, um, anyway, real long-winded, just, but I, I just want to make sure we're putting a, a good product out there, and, um, but at the same time, it, it, it may be a good time to transition at least temporarily, maybe back to fu- uh, fully in-person at some point, and eventually with a, a hybrid option, or certainly nothing wrong with continuing to be virtual, too. But I think we also wanted the public to understand that we're having the discussion. All right, now I'll stop.
All right, um, open up to the board, um, Lieutenant Wagner, any updates from the, the county?
Uh, no, the updates won't, um, come out until at the earliest Wednesday.
Okay.
So as of right now, like Matt was saying, um, I concur with everything he says, and then uh, CDC guidelines, like he had mentioned states that, you know, vaccinated people can, uh, be in a meeting altogether. Uh, but Dane County restrictions at this point are still in place, so uh, we do have to wait for the, their new orders or their new, uh, suggestions, uh, before we make any, you know, final plans.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Appreciate the update. Uh, all right, I'll turn it over to the board.
Um, I'll just say, I guess, I like meeting in person way better than Zoom, but the, the one thing that I think about is when we have so many people at our board meetings, like tonight we had thirty people, um, thinking about that in, in our village hall, uh, is concerning to me at this point. So I just, I'm interested to hear how other people feel as well, but that's one concern that I have at this point.
I, I, uh, I'll speak up. I, I concur with Melissa. Uh, I personally think until we have an option of virtual and in-person, uh, as an, as an option that we continue to do virtual, um, I don't think that this has held us back in any way, shape, or form from being productive as a community. I think it allows the public to participate. I, I, I actually feel like we've had more participation in the last twelve months than we've had in the twelve months prior, that, uh, we're, we're seeing more and more people on the, on the meetings. Um, so I, I personally am in no rush to get back together, uh, not that I don't like anybody, but, uh, uh, the other part, part of that is, is you're, you're, you're trusting the person that's sitting in front of you alongside you, whatever, that they're vaccinated, and we don't, really don't know if they're vaccinated. So.
Thanks, Troy. I'll, I'll just say with, if I'm understanding the CDC guidelines, and, yeah, we need to wait for Dane County, but the, they're essentially saying, the data is telling them that if you're vaccinated, you're safe, so, uh, you, you hope that for the greater good, everyone gets vaccinated, but if someone's unvaccinated and you're fully vaccinated, you shouldn't have a concern as far as the CDC's, CDC is telling us right now. So, and, and again, I was just wanting to provide the, the forum for, for discussion on this, and, uh, by no means am I suggesting we, we need to go back to in-person or anything like that.
Matt, I'm, the techno nerd in me is kind of interested in, in technol- the, the technology that you, you're describing to do hybrid. Are you talking about boom mics and cameras, or kind of, what, what are you, what, what are you looking to procure to be able to do better hybrid production?
Um, I appreciate the question, David, and you're talking to the, the, the wrong person, um, but I can, I can, um, put you in touch with our, I, I've actually brought on a, one of our past cable, um, TV employees who's now full-time with the Village of McFarland is, is gonna help us on an hourly basis to to help us implement this, and, and he's great with all the technology, and, um, if you, if you wanna shoot me a message, and I did see a, an email maybe come through from you on, on this, I can, I can get that answered. But I, I have.
I'm just curious.
I don't have the slightest.
Yeah, just, just, just slightly curious.
You bet.
No, I, I will echo kind of the concerns that Melissa and Troy stated. I think it's been a big topic in my house, uh, is, since the CDC has released this, and you have to, it scouts honor as to whether or not you've actually been vaccinated. Um, it will be, the next, you know, six months will be a very interesting time when we all start to venture out, and so I, I, I echo Melissa and Troy's concerns. Um, as much as I want to get in person, I'm also, and I am vaccinated, it's still kind of a lot of question marks. For what it's worth. So, thanks.
Um, Matt, do you need a motion to continue on the path to get us to hybrid then, or, I guess, or was this more a motion if we wanted to start meeting in person before then?
I, I think a motion is okay, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's needed. I, you know, I'm, I'm hearing directions to, uh, continue with, with virtual, um, until a time comes that we, we have a, an option to do both, and, and that's what we'll keep, that's what we'll continue to do, and, and unless, um, you know, unless we hear otherwise from the board, or, or someone on the board wants to, in the meantime, you know, pursue something else than that.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Are we technically right now allowed to be doing virtual because of the emergency declaration, and is that county, the state, or the federal, or does that not matter when the emergency expires? Does our coverage for doing this expire?
I'll, I'll take a stab at it, but it looks like Larry's lighting up, I'll let Larry answer.
Yeah, I'd say, I would say that, uh, the guidance on that has been very slim, even at the beginning of the pandemic. But in my opinion, we're definitely allowed to do some, uh, some sort of a, a part virtual, part in-person option. uh part virtual, part in-person option. Um, y- you know, you never get a straight answer on what you can do. A lot of times they tell you what you can't, but in my opinion, we we've got a lot of flexibility in what we can do in that regard.
No matter if the emergency expires or not? I don't know when it expires.
Right, that's that's correct. Even
Okay.
even when it expires, we have broad flexibility and options. And and I and I know, you know, having since we represent a lot of different communities in various capacities, there are many of them that are considering what to do next and not to just go back to business as usual, because, you know, for a lot of the reasons that Troy and others mentioned, people are recognizing that you can get a higher level of engagement and often times it's a better quality of a meeting i- for some purposes, you know, just if everyone has a screen in front of them with the meeting playing and someone wants to share a screen as opposed to making everyone be in the room at the hall to see that uh the 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 visuals placed on the screen. It just makes it a lot easier for people who want to engage other than just watching YouTube. So I, th- th- there's a lot of people thinking about that, and it will happen in many communities. And we won't be al- alone in assessing the degree to which that it's allowed or or whether there's limitations. That'll be a pretty common kind of thing. We can, we can share that evaluation with others.
And and I'll just say what the kind of um decision-making criteria we're using in the hospital to decide if we have in-person meetings or not is we need to, we have to actually be able to say what the benefit is to having to an in-person meeting versus virtual. So I don't, right now, I couldn't state a a specific reason why meeting, us meeting in person gives us any additional benefit or better outcome. So I I agree with what everyone else has said.
Um, and s- uh one one other comment here to to David's uh question, um Spencer Meyer, our our guy behind the scenes here with the cable um can can uh probably answer some of that question. So um Spencer, feel free to jump on if you can. Thank you. Yes.
Do we have our own makeup artist?
Thanks, Spencer.
I'm not sure there's enough time. I'm not sure there's enough time for me between the meetings or before the meeting, and I'm just making that statement.
Thanks, Spencer. And the the other thing that I'm I'm hearing from some communities is uh th- there are some that are making the argument that the expense to do these upgrades fa- falls within the um American Recovery Act funds, so we may be able to use those funds, even though we do have um some capital funds put aside for for the cable department. So anyway, we can go back to the rest of the conversation.
I do. Oh, go ahead, Melissa.
No, that's okay. Go ahead, Heidi.
Um, is this something that each committee needs to discuss separately, or is this something that a decision for all the other committees also?
Um, my my thinking on it is, has always been, we wanna err on the side of trying to um make sure everyone's comfortable. I mean, I it may not be that way forever, but you know, coming out of this, there's my sense is there's just no reason to rush. Um, having said that, if there's if there's a committee that really wants to be in person and they're all vaccinated, um if the board's okay with it, I mean, you could leave it up to an individual committee, but the board also could, you know, there there are committees that are underneath you also. It's totally y- you you guys could leave it up to them if you'd like, or or you could you could mandate that they remain virtual. So as with many things, it's all it's all up to you guys.
And I'm just thinking from the public's perspective of how are they going to attend a meeting? It might be valuable to just be consistent until the board goes to hybrid, maybe the committees stay virtual also. I don't, just to make that, like, oh, this committee's in person, oh, this one's virtual. Yeah, I know it's at the top of the agenda, but it might just be easy to be consistent.
Yep, like, I could see that, and and um long term, some of the, especially with um lack of meeting space, virtual meetings is a a great option. It doesn't take up any meeting space, and we've added a lot of committees that, and we don't have to worry about we don't have to worry too much about conflicts. We just have to coordinate the Zoom links. So it's really worked out pretty well. So there could be, there could be some committees that choose to if if the board's okay with it, they, there may be some committees that would like to permanently be virtual or for, you know, a indefinite time period.
Um, at this point, I I think it would be better if the committees went with what the board decides. Um, that would be my preference, just to make it more consistent. Um, uh, do you think this is something that we can put on our village uh Facebook page? Just getting input from the public as to whether they prefer virtual, hybrid, or only in person? Some sort of doodle poll or some something?
Sure, I can I can draft something and and uh see what the feedback is. Might generate some interesting uh comments.
Yes, at least at least then we're getting input from the public as to what they'd like to see in the future, too.
Of course.
Thank you.
A- a- and maybe to tag along with that, uh Matt, um, you know, I know we're looking at the facility study, and uh, you know, based on the success that we've had, you know, again, with the last twelve, fourteen months of uh virtual and and, you know, get back into a mode of, you know, maybe a a hybrid model, um is that something that's built into that study? Uh that we may not need as much meeting space um moving forward uh with the success that we're seeing with the how we're operating today?
It 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 is, and there's a lot of talk about uh flexible meeting space and maybe um having more more generic office spaces with docking stations and and where some staff, you know, is rotating, working remotely, some in the office. Um, so there's a lot, lot of that discussion. There was a um, I th- I think, I think my future, future office in a future village hall has already been cut in half in size, so the they're they're being, the the consultants are are very good with um working through them, and they're mindful of the new, the new normal.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, so we're gonna continue as is for now and then wait for that potential hybrid option or further discussion down the road for all committees. Um, then moving on to communication, miscellaneous business, first is consider the approval of vouchers.
I had, I had one question on page, uh, what page is it? Page four, uh, McKay Nursery Company for Commerce Park Trees, I guess, is or where the, where are all the trees going? For thirteen thousand dollars, and it looks like if I'm reading my four hundred uh G L account number correctly, that that's paid for by the TID, but I don't know. First question, where are the trees going?
Hey, Melissa, I can I can help with this one. Um, several of the trees that were out there were dead and to be replaced, so um we did an inventory, and that was what had to be replaced.
Well, that's sad. Okay, um, but good. And is that the fund that they're coming out of? Uh, is it being paid by the TID, or what's the four hundred code again?
Uh, that's a question for Deb, but yes, I believe they are being paid, J J, uh are being paid for by the TID.
Y- yes and no. They're they're being, it's it's actually assessed to the um businesses in the Commerce Park. Um, part of those agreements. So I I believe it's part of the deeds and part of the deed restrictions. Um, it's not just the trees. They they pay for maintenance of the right-of-way. J J can explain. J J puts together basically an assessment that gets split up based on um frontage for each lot in the park, so that everyone essentially chips in. So it it is coming out of the TIP district, but we're recovering, we're recovering the money from the businesses to offset that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the vouchers?
Curious about
I'll make a motion.
Whoops, go ahead, David, and then Troy, you can jump in.
Yeah, page two, Matt, uh, Computer Magic. I I did go back through some of the bills list. It it, I guess, maybe we can take this offline, but I I'm just curious about kind of the ongoing costs here per month for Computer Magic. Um, it seems to be adding up month over month, and I'm just here, are they, is this when you open a table with them, that that's considered a part of the service agreement, or or kind of how how is this structured?
I I can take that if if you want. Um
Sure.
Yeah, so we 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 do pay what, when you look at it, it seems like a lot to Computer Magic. However, they handle every aspect of the service. We don't pay anything extra above and beyond that, except for unless we buy hardware of some sort. But that includes all the storage, all the backups, all the um virus protection, backend, people trying to get in protection. I mean, we don't, we very rarely have an issue with somebody try with with um scams or, I'm I'm not using the right words because I'm not, I don't speak that language, but um it's something that we don't really have to ever have a second thought about, and that security and that comfort level, in my opinion, um is more than worth what we're paying them.
Yeah, I, sure, I mean, I I I guess I I I still kind of lost is of what what we're paying for, um, because it sounds like, I mean, we don't have a dedicated I T person. So your, our I T person is Computer Magic, right? I, but the what I'm seeing here is, you know, some of these rates, I mean, again, and maybe maybe we could, this is a further conversation. I know it's getting late, but man, I'm just kind of curious about this, because I just on a whim started looking back at some of the older bills lists.
Yeah, well, they, well, David, your your expertise would be, I mean, happy to, you know, I could meet with um we could meet with you and and have Computer Magic there, you know, we could, we could talk it through that way. Um, i- if it if it really is a potential outlier on on costs, um, you know, we can, we could invite the consultant to to talk to the board and um, you know, we can always open that up for a competitive, you know, process as well.
Sure, I mean, uh, I don't wanna jump in, I I, there's there's some statements I want to make, but I don't wanna jump to conclusions, right? So I think I think I'll take you up on that.
Okay.
Just 'cause, again, I I don't know what I don't know, but again, for the size of our staff and for what I know, I I I have questions.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah, I'll pull it. Thanks.
All right, Troy.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion second. Uh, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Anybody abstain? Motion carries, and David will follow up with Matt and Deb. Um, then correspondence, um, we had, the board did receive a few emails, I think, on support for library and the prioritization. You guys all saw those. I didn't have anything else.
I I had one quick one, John. We, our 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 staff had received um a a couple of back and forths from a a resident that uh took issue with a a neighbor's fence location, and I I I thought it'd be worthwhile just bringing it up to the board. Um, if it's a future agenda item, you know, anyone can feel free to to jump in on that, but um, also just wanted to let the board know how we handle these situations and 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 essentially, we, the the village does not get involved in locating property lines. So the complaint was some, that someone's neighbor encroached on their property, and 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 we just approach, approach that as a staff, as that's a a private matter that the that the village should not get involved in. You know, of course, common law and and village ordinance says you can't build anything on someone else's property. I mean, that's kind of, that's common, but it's not necessarily the village's um duty to um verify that and and the cost of, you know, surveying or even verifying a survey. Um, more or less, just want to let you guys know that that was going on in case you, in case you get a complaint from a resident, because what it what happens when we deal with that is obviously that's, a resident is not gonna view our response as that's good customer service, because it's not good customer service, but it's what's best for the village, because it's not it's not ideal for the rest of the village to be paying for um staff to y- y- you know, get into a a neighborly dispute on property lines. So anyway, that's happy to answer any questions on that. Um Larry, I don't know if you wanna jump in and give any perspective on that as well.
Yeah, I think you covered it well. There's things we can help with, and there's things where the the law of diminishing returns is so far off the scale that it uh it doesn't read, and this is one of those situations that, yes, it's a requirement of a permit, but that doesn't mean that uh, you know, that 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 the village is going to or should really operate as the dispute resolution process between private parties on a private matter.
Yeah, and and I think in addition to that, uh um, Hi- Heidi's considering potentially having a discussion about suffer from this property line issue, but just taking a look at our fence ordinance and 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 permit process and we u- ultimately, we we may not really need a a fence permit altogether. I know that's what our building inspectors would recommend, so um, just something to think about, but in case you guys get a a call on that, there's there's very likely a unhappy residence uh right now, so.
That's interesting, because the local, a local fence company, um, they did our fence a couple of years ago, but they recommend having the fence go at the property line. So I can see this getting, I mean, that that was their recommendation when they came out to our house. Um
And that and that's okay, as long as you're comfortable with with the best.
Right. It cau- it causes conflict for sure, because that line is, you know, usually a little farther than one thought it was.
Yeah, especially if someone was bowling a certain way for a long time and, yeah.
Yeah.
Understood.
All right, um, good discussion. Move on to uh upcoming community events. Um, I know Sean's got some stuff cooking for Bach and Park. Um, I know Sean's got some stuff cooking for Bach and Park. And then, uh, Miracle Field is coming right after that. There's also, um, uh, the Legion's got some stuff going on with, um, Memorial Day. There's a ceremony on the twenty-ninth up at, uh, at ten AM at the Town Hall. They also have, if anybody's interested, they'll have, uh, you can assist with placing flags. On May twenty-seventh, you just have to reach out to John Russell on that. He did send that over to us. Um, and then Sean, do you wanna pipe in about the stuff coming up on the fifth and beyond?
Yep. Thanks, John. Um, June fifth is the grand opening for the Splash Pad and the Shelter. So, hopefully everybody can be there for that. We've been, uh, last week we tested it. Uh, we're super excited. Posted some stuff on Facebook, uh, of the big bucket following, so we're, super excited about that. So, June fifth, we hope everybody can be there, um, including all the board. Um, June ninth is the grand opening, uh, or it's considered opening day for, um, the Miracle Field. So, there's gonna be, rugby has, been gracious enough to provide hot dogs and beans and brats for everybody that shows up. So, we're hoping that everybody can be there. That, that process is going really well. And, uh, just really excited for that park. It's just super cool there. So, hopefully everybody can join us.
And do you have a time for the fifth?
Yep. Sorry, that's important. Yeah, ten o'clock.
Ten AM, ten AM.
Ten AM, yep. John is, is gonna sing the National Anthem and, um, and do whatever else at ten AM and then,
I'll be a dance too.
A-as I was told.
I heard that the director, the Director of Public Works is going to stand under the first bucket, full of water to tip, and it's gonna be ice water. A loving bucket of ice water. I love it. That's exactly how I would think.
You could do a fundraiser for that, couldn't you?
You might, you might raise a lot of money.
All right. And then before we know it, uh, following that, uh, after the ninth, then we're stepping right into Fireman's Festival, uh, real quick. So, it'll go by fast. And I know there's a lot of other things going on. They got grad parties, galore and all that other stuff, uh, for those kiddos too. So, um, we're starting to finally crawl out of the, of the winter and the spring blahs. So, it's pretty exciting. Be great to see everybody out, uh, riding bikes and walking and everything too. Um, anybody else have anything else they wanna highlight?
You, you talk about Fireman's Festival, John, uh, Cottage Grove Lions is still planning to do a pancake breakfast on, uh, Sunday, the twentieth. At Fireman's Park, uh, Lion Shelter on Clark Street.
Thanks, Troy. Um, yep, so, it's exciting. All the way around. Um, future agenda items. Matt, I think we're gonna have more, some more development stuff, flowing through here, but I, hopefully not too much more, cause I know it flew all through here tonight.
Probably not for the next meeting, but maybe the second one in, um, in June, following Plan Commission. Um, but, we do anticipate, uh, we, we should be receiving, uh, proposals from Engineering Services, uh, this Thursday. Uh, JJ and I will, depending on how many we receive, um, JJ and I will review those and, um, bring the, the most qualified from the group to the board to do some presentations and a question and answer, in front of the board and, um, and then we could have a, a closed session to, uh, discuss and consider, um, aspects of a potential service agreement with, with the finalists. So, that would be a process for the next, next meeting. But as of now, that's the, that's the main item for the, for the next meeting.
Right.
And a continuation, sorry, a, a continuation of, uh, the prioritization process, the, the true start of it.
Right.
And John, we will have alcohol license and other license renewals, um, at the next, meeting, which will be the first meeting in June. That will be on the agenda.
Okay. Thanks, Lisa.
And John, with the close, uh, uh, Larry, I don't know how, how, how best, how best should, um, do you propose that we handle the, closed session here? Cause we do not need the, we do not need the TIP five closed session, I believe, correct?
Right, we can just skip that.
So, just that second one, John?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Then, uh, with that, then I will move into, um, a motion for the, it was to go in a closed session, uh, for a background check from an operator's license application, alcohol beverage license, uh, denial from the police department. Uh, the, the Village of Cottage Grove Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, nineteen point eight five, parentheses, one, parentheses, F, considering financial, medical, uh, social or personal histories, or disciplinary data, um, of specific personnel, uh, prelim- preliminary, a consideration of specific personnel problems, or investigation of charges against specific persons, except whereby par B, uh, applies, which, uh, if discussed in public would likely have substantial adverse effects upon the reputation of any, uh, person, referred to in such, uh, histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have more seconds. This is roll call. So, Lisa, please.
Alan.
Hi.
Murphy.
I'm Peterson.
Aye.
Redcliffe.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Vanderwalde. And Williams.
Aye. See you in a little bit.